Good evening, everyone. I am Margaret Smith, Chair of the Planning Commission, and I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting, the Town of Los Gatos, on May 14th, 2014. Mr. Paulson, are you going to read the roll tonight?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Seauk.
Here.
Commissioner Bondamie.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Vice Chair Birch.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Erickson has an excused absence.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join Commissioner Seauk in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under I, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We know you have an interest in the items for this evening, or it's 95 degrees out and you know the council chambers is going to be nice and cool. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages public participation. We consider it part of democracy in action. There are several ways that you can participate in the Planning Commission hearings. One way, prior to an agenda item that interests you, you can submit written comments to the staff. Those comments are then given to the commissioners in their commission packet for each meeting, and we do read them and consider them seriously. The second way is that there is a verbal communication period. That is when you may speak on a matter that is not on the agenda. So if there is something that you would like the Planning Commission to be aware of, you may come before us and speak for three minutes on an item that is not on the agenda. Then there are agendized items. We would ask, in all cases, that anyone who wishes to speak, fill out a speaker card in the back, in front of each of the seats that you're in, and you indicate which agenda item that you want to speak on. In all cases, we ask that you step to the podium, you pull the microphone close to you, and you give us your name and your address. Then you will have three minutes to talk with us or tell us what is on your mind. An applicant on an agendized item gets five minutes and then an additional three minutes after other people have spoken. So that, we'll remind you of that as we move along. The commissioners have received a copy of the minutes of the meeting of April 24th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Everyone read them? Yes. Commissioner Seauk.
I move to approve the minutes of April 23, as introduced in the staff report.
And is there a second? Commissioner Talisfor.
I'll second that motion.
All right. And is there any discussion? Yes. Commissioner Bondamie.
I was not present for items number one and number two, but I actually viewed the hearings online and could attest to the minutes.
All right. Thank you. We now have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Mr. Paulson, are there any written communications this evening?
There are. There are two desk items for item number two that you've received, and there are copies out in the lobby.
And are there any requested continuances this evening?
No.
All right. Commissioners, have you had an opportunity to read the desk items? Yes. All right. So we're fine with that. In addition to their service on the commission, the commissioners do also serve on subcommittees that meet between the times of our public hearings. Are there any reports from any committees that might have met? Commissioner Seauk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Housing Element Advisory Board did meet twice since the last time the Planning Commission met. And just a reminder for those, the Housing Element Advisory Board, it's a specific subcommittee that was created, and its task is to look and identify potential sites that could accommodate affordable housing. We did look at several, including secondary units, as well as mixed-use options along Los Gatos Boulevard. The takeaway from the last two meetings was that we directed staff to look at the pros and cons of all the alternatives that was presented. They'll be bringing it back to us next Thursday, and at that time, the committee will hope to give some further direction on which way to proceed. All meetings are available to the public. It's here in the town council chambers next Thursday, 7 to 9. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd also like to give a special welcome this evening to Laurel Prevetti, who is serving as our Community Development Director. Welcome to you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Now we come to the verbal communication part, where a member of the public can speak to us on any matter that is not on the agenda. If you desire to do so, but you have been shy and you haven't submitted your card, you can just raise your hand and come up and submit it after you speak. Seeing none, we will now move on. Oh, okay. Yes. So just be sure you fill out a card before you leave. All right?
I have one for the number one.
Okay. Pull the microphone up and pull, and give us your name and address, and know that when the yellow button comes on, that means you're 30 seconds left.
Great. Hi, Ingrid Oakley-Gervin. I live at 260 Alcohone Way in Los Gatos, and that's off of Lark. So every morning, I encounter the Lark traffic, and I would like to request that the Planning Commission specify to the town engineer, traffic engineer, to review. I did talk to Mr. Rohani about this a number of years ago, well before the Albright Way project. If you're coming down University, taking a right onto Lark, it is fully parked up. There is a short red curb, and if the curb were made red all the way to the first driveway, that would enhance the traffic flow off of University, turning right onto Lark. Similarly, if you are coming on Lark towards Winchester and want to take a left on University, you encounter a new light, put in, I assume, by the Albright Way project. That light should be turned to a blinking red when the oncoming traffic is prohibited, or not prohibited, but not there. And then the left turn lane off of University is a red. So if you look at the traffic alignment in many parts of town, I think we can do a significantly better job than we're currently doing, and those two are just serving as an example of where I think enhancements could be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, are there any continued public hearings, Mr. Paulson?
There are not.
All right. So we will now move to the public portion of the public hearing, and begin with Agenda Item Number One, which is identified as the North Forty Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment GP 14001, Zoning Code Amendment Z 14001, and Environmental Impact Report, EIR 10002. This is the Planning Commission hearing to accept public comment on the draft environmental impact report for what is known as the North Forty Specific Plan. That comprises approximately 44 acres located at the northern extent of the town, bordered by Route 17, Route 85, Los Gatos Boulevard, and Lark. As required by the California Environmental Quality Act, this public hearing is being held during the 45-day public notice period. The notice of availability for review of the draft EIR was released on April 4th, with the 45-day review period ending on May 19th, 2014. This public hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to provide verbal comments on the draft EIR. Written comments will be accepted until the close of the public hearing on May 19th. This public hearing, just to be certain that you understand, this is not where the Planning Commission is taking this matter under consideration. We are here this evening to accept your remarks. We ask, when you step to the podium, if you would please state your name and address, and make all of your comments directly to the commissioners. So we're here to listen to you this evening. We will not be asking you questions, and nor will the staff be doing so as well. At the end of the public hearing portion, we will just close the matter, and then perhaps take a short break, we're not sure, but just to give you an idea of what the evening is going to look like. Again, please keep in mind that the purpose of this meeting is to accept remarks. Anything else, Mr. Paulson?
I believe potentially the Vice Chair has a statement?
Yes.
I will need to recuse myself, as I live within 500 feet of the subject property. However, I'll sit back, and I will be ready for item number two.
All right. And we have promised the commissioner that we will not forget her back there. We will go and get her for Agenda Item Two. So before we proceed, are there any questions of the staff from any commissioners? All right. Seeing none. I will call up the speakers. I'm going to call up three at a time, and that means if you would just queue up behind the speaker, and then that way we can get through this evening in an orderly way, expeditious way, as well. So the first person who is going to speak to me is, or speak to us, Jack Van Natta. Could you step forward? He's going to be followed by Lee Quintana, and then by Andy Wu.
Good evening. My name is Jack Van Natta. I live at 165 Euclid in Los Gatos. In general, I am for the North Forty development. I will follow up the speech with data that generates my comments tonight, and send it to you by the 19th. The Netflix project, plus the North Forty, within eight tenths of a mile of one another, plus two new large medical buildings almost next door, will give us gridlock during the commute hours. We are no longer a small town, but rather a small city, trying to convince ourselves that we're a small town. If we have to be a small city, then I would recommend that we soften the sharp edges of heavy traffic with better planning for the vast number of people who either live here or come here to hike, bike, or walk. Everything we design is for cars, and now the VTA is trying to add more traffic to 85. When does it stop? This plan is also favoring the car. We have a plan to put a bike lane on Lark with this new development, but it, like so many other things, is like vaporware. It may or may not happen, and likely won't, because they're putting a wider-than-necessary median, hoping that the bike lane will somehow come to fruition later. Why not do it now? A group of us is stuck with the development process for the past few years, feeling that the traffic in the schools would suffer with the increase in development. We are concerned that the town relies on potentially bad data. For instance, we did our own survey on students that came from Laurel, Muse, Bluebird, and Charter Oaks versus the number of students that were projected when using formula numbers. The actual students from those two projects were off by 100%. Rancho de Los Gatos, Gatos, originally a senior adult complex, currently has 19 students going to Los Gatos schools. We have that data, if you would like the proof. I went to the town engineering office to obtain traffic counts on city streets. I was told that only old traffic counts were online, but if I gave them some intersections, they would send me the data. 10 days later, I still haven't received it. However, that same engineer told me that I did not have to be concerned, as the projections were very conservative, and there had been negligible traffic increases in the last 10 years. With that said, I asked him if anyone ever followed up the projections with an analysis of the projected versus actual. The town does not do that, in the case of schools, nor in the case of traffic. For two such critical numbers, I would like to see the town quit using the data generated from manuals, and adjust the student counts accordingly, so that the students, schools, can better plan their future. I would like to see the engineering department do traffic counts a year after a project is occupied, to see how accurate the traffic engineers were with their projections. One sentence. We simply do not believe the data we're getting now, and don't believe you should either. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Van Natta. Ms. Quintana?
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. I'm going to keep my comments relative to the draft EIR itself. This is probably a rare EIR that I have found it easier to understand, the project's impacts and proposed mitigation, by reading the technical reports with the technical data, rather than the text of the EIR itself. I'm going to skip down to my primary subject, and then I'm going to go back and summarize some of the reasons that I made that statement. But my primary comments are on the Historic Resources, which is Section 3.5 of the draft EIR. The technical report, which is in Appendix G on the Historic Resources, includes a Phase One Historic Evaluation and a Final Historic Resources Technical Report, that are not accurately or even adequately summarized in the draft EIR text itself, nor are the conclusions that are reached by the DEIR text, supported by the technical reports in the appendices. I suggest that the EIR text be revised to accurately summarize the findings and conclusions of the Historic Resources Evaluation, which is Phase One in Appendix G, to accurately summarize the Historic Resources Technical Report, which is the final report in Appendix G, and to explain and support by substantial evidence the differences between the findings and conclusions of significance in those reports and the conclusions reached in the DEIR. I'm going to go back now to some of the comments that I have on the readability of the, and understandability of the draft EIR. The summary, which is Section S-1, is a summary of impacts and mitigation measures. However, it does not adequately summarize the impact that the proposed mitigation is intended to reduce. It is easier to understand the air quality and greenhouse gas impact and mitigation, reading the technical reports, because in Appendix D, because in Appendix D, the air quality and greenhouse gas emissions assessment are integrated into a single topic. The greenhouse gas emissions, however, is separated from the air quality emissions in the draft EIR text by three different sections. That leads to discontinuity and hard to understand. And lastly, the traffic and transportation section does not provide adequate graphics to easily understand the existing road configurations, or the configurations of the proposed mitigation.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Following the next speaker will be Amy Desparz and Matthew Hudes. Mr. Wu, can you state your name and address for the record?
Hold one, please. Oh, upside down. I was afraid of that. Yes. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Andy Wu. I live down the street from Jack Van Natta. If you don't know my exact address, you really don't need to, but it's at 28. I want to go off-topic. I really don't want to talk about the DEIR, because my predecessor, Lee Quintana, has basically stated everything that I would have stated as well. So let me just refer to that graphic, and you'll understand of what I speak. Sunday, 7 December 1941, 06:55 hours. 353 aircraft launched from six fleet carriers of the Imperial Japanese Navy make their initial point turn. That's the IP turn. On their way to Pearl Harbor, various targets located within the naval base there. Within three hours, the Pacific Fleet lies in ruins. All eight battleships, the major ships in port at the time, have been either heavily damaged or are sunk. Only the USS Nevada having cleared its marines and gotten underway, under its own steam, but was beached by its captain for fear of blocking the harbor entrance. Admiral Husband Kimmel and General Walter Short were both the leaders of their commands for dereliction of duty. 19 February 1942, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt issues Executive Order 9066, which allows military commanders in the area to intern those persons they deem are a danger to national security. Where relocation camps are built all over the United States, however, before they are built, 110,000 persons of Japanese heritage, including every single person of Japanese heritage living in California, 62% of which were natural-born Americans, because there was no naturalization law at that point, are ordered to interment camps. Before they can go to interment camps, however, they have to be housed. So where are they housed? You look at that map. You see places like Tan Fran, which is a mall now, Pomona, Santa Ana, those are all racetracks. So they had to live in the horse stalls for six months before they could be relocated to places. And I didn't even know there were relocation camps in Arkansas. But as far away as Arkansas, as far north as the state of Montana. Now, during this period of time, there's a Yuki family. They own a large portion of the North Forty. Takiyo Yuki, who lived on that land, was charged with treason. Now, he had to fight his way out of the, out of that charge, and was allowed to join his family. On 2 January 1945, his camp was closed. He returned, he was allowed to return home, and he's given this, $25 and a train ticket to return to the home that he no longer has. Fortunately for him, his business partner had maintained his farm, so he was allowed, or he could have the means to buy the North Forty. Now, wouldn't it be a great thing if we had some historical preservation on this plot?
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Desparz, 267 Longridge Road. I am a parent, second-generation Los Gatan, and also a teacher here in the community. I am going to start with, I think it's kind of ironic, that this lovely brochure, flyer, whatever went out, states that "The North Forty Draft Specific Plan has been designed to address needed commercial and housing opportunities in the less congested northeast corner of our town." Less congested. Let's see. For me to get from Los Gatos Boulevard to Winchester on Lark Avenue, less than one mile, takes me up to 15 minutes sometimes. So for me to get from Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark Avenue to 85, takes me up to 15 minutes often, often. So I, this to me is false advertising. There are also some other things that I'd like to quote in here. Summer Hill Homes and Eden Housing and Grosvenor, one of the world's oldest real estate companies. World's oldest real estate. They don't know Los Gatos. We are a community, a small town. Many of us grew up here, many of us standing here, want to preserve it. Yes, we are growing, but we need to do it in the right way. Nearly 1.9 million annually for local schools. That sounds great. The problem is, our schools are overcrowded. That 1.9 million is nothing. That will provide nothing for our students. We don't have schools to put these students in. Los Gatos High has no schools to put students in, and they're overcrowded. Transportation improvements for bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists, as well as public transit connections, will not help the traffic problem. We're in a society where people drive. Most people, maybe some people will start to bike, but it's not going to help the traffic. Here's my, one I love. Housing to fulfill unmet needs for young professionals, move-down locals, and seniors, while having a minimal impact on schools. Right now, I know families, for a fact, who are living in two-bedroom apartments with three, two, three, four kids. You don't think people are going to cram their families into these little places? I read it. There's no minimum age on any of them, except for the one small section as senior. If you want to put senior housing in there, I love that idea. But you really need to consider, people are cramming their kids into these houses, into small apartments everywhere. I live off of Carlton, I see it, I know the families. And also, whatever you choose, I just really, please, no more pizza parlors, no more coffee, no more burrito. Give us something else. Please, don't approve it, and really think about what you're putting in across from Whole Foods in that area, too. I can't believe what you guys have approved. So please consider all of us. We like to call it uptown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desparz. Mr. Hudes. And then right behind, the next speaker will be Terry, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, McBriar T., and then Janice Falk.
Matthew Hudes, 16631 Madrona Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about this. I have been a member of the committee looking at North Forty over the last couple of years. I was on the East Coast earlier this week. I'm flying out to San Diego this evening. I came back to talk to you about very serious concerns that I have about the draft EIR. Some aspects of the impacts can be mitigated, and some of them, I think, have been raised in terms of traffic, even in terms of schools. The impact that I'd like to talk to you about is the downtown, which is, I think, one that is much less amenable to mitigation measures. Once the downtown starts a decline, it will be very difficult to turn that around, and that the kind of development that's envisioned in the North Forty, I believe, has a potential very substantial impact, negative impact, on the heart of the downtown. I think the draft EIR is very deficient in the way that it has looked at this aspect. Much of the data, the analysis of the data, the report itself is well-written, and there's actually quite a bit of good data that we haven't seen before on retail activity. The analysis is flawed, and it appears to be presented in a way that makes a case for building a new shopping center on the scale of Santana Row. For two years, I've been urging the town to look at an economic analysis of this project. The Urban Decay Appendix is a start, but it's deficient. And I'd like to explain what my main comments are. There are numerous opinions and conclusions in that report that are offered without basis and fact. The comparison of the shopping, of the 10-minute drive area, is not a 10-minute drive area by any means. It's probably 25 or 30-minute drive area. There are no case studies in that report, despite providing to staff examples of other urban decay analysis that have case studies. Ones that I suggested that they look at are Sacramento, Walnut Creek, Livermore, Pleasanton Campbell, San Luis Obispo, and Napa. There's a few words about Palo Alto, but it's very old and dated. The main point is that the data cited in the study have been interpreted in a manner favorable to development. When the conclusion is presented that there will be little impact because we have a vibrant downtown, the data do not support that. The data shows a 34% drop in retail since 2000, and that's not what the conclusion of the report is. So I would urge us to examine that more carefully.
Thank you very much. The next speaker? Introduce yourself.
Terry McBriar T., 15075 Garden Hill Drive. I have many concerns about the North Forty, and have ever since the first plans went to the drawing board. I have two children in the Los Gatos school system, and one is in first grade, and one is a third grader. And I have seen, you know, our school grow from around 500 students to almost 700 students this year, and just more and more students showing up. Practically every month, more students show up, and there's nowhere to put them. So the idea that you could add all these units, and they're going to be for empty nesters, or whatever this cute idea is, and it's not going to impact our schools, is a joke, and it's going to be the nail in the coffin that's the public school system in Los Gatos, and it breaks my heart. The main thing I wanted to talk about was Garden Hill is right off of Lark, and so I have to drive on Lark several times a day, every morning, every afternoon, and the night, and the traffic on Lark has become a nightmare. It's scary. There's been, you know, a man lost his life there, right around the corner from my house. You know, if my husband had been waiting to go to work at that signal, when that man lost control of his vehicle, my husband would be dead. Some of the changes that you're talking about making, that seem to be eliminating the small buffer zone between the sidewalk on the bridge, where I sometimes ride my bike with my child, where I had a bike accident about a year ago. If that buffer zone were eliminated, when I had my bike accident with my child on my bike, I probably would have been hit and killed when I fell off the sidewalk. So, you know, you're just talking about expanding lanes and doing things that, you know, they're called improvements in here, but to me, they sound like things that are going to kill people. I see pedestrians ignoring the lights and doing things- I see pedestrians ignoring the lights and doing things every day that endanger people, and the changes you're talking about making are going to endanger more people, increasing traffic on Lark while not addressing the issues with classic car wash, and the dangers that it causes with people stopping the flow of traffic. Lark is a nightmare that needs to be addressed right now, and adding all the traffic that will be added by these projects, I don't know that that can be fixed.
Thank you very much. Before Ms. Fock comes up, the next, behind her will be Jeff Harlan and Larry Arzy, if you could queue up as well.
Good evening, I'm Janice Fock. I have a few issues with the DEIR that I would like you to take a look at for the final draft. In Section Two, the project description, specifically the project vicinity existing conditions, page two point two, states that a private school is located in proximity. That's actually the JCC. The private school portion of the JCC is a hundred and fifty-four students. The JCC is a huge cultural, sports, and community complex, so I don't think that traffic has been addressed. Also, on the map, called Figure Six, it calls out Carlton Elementary as the nearest elementary school. Carlton Elementary is in the Union School District, it's not served by any portion of this parcel, so that's a misleading figure. In Section three point zero, the environmental effects, three point twelve, population, housing, and public services, it states that the cumulative student load from Guadalupe Mines, Riviera Terrace, South Bay Honda, Swanson Ford, and Thrash House, which is affectionately known as Bluebird, will be a total of seventy students. We don't have to say "will be," all these projects are built, and our district should be able to provide us with actual counts. This is important, because as other speakers have said, the schools are full, and I would like you to use actuals since they are available. Also, in Section Three, page one eighty-four, states an eighty-twenty split between the Los Gatos and Campbell Cambrian School District. That's only valid if the specific plan is going to mandate such a split, and I don't know if that's within the purview of the specific plan. Finally, Section Three, again, page one eighty-four, states that the effects of student generation will take twenty years to hit the district. And the Los Gatos Union School District did a Imagine Twenty Twenty Two Plan where they did a ten-year projection, and I have some of that information here. Turn that on. Okay. The Twenty Twenty Two Plan had four levels of impact. Projection A was no future development. Projection B was known and approved developments, those five I just listed. Projection C was all known future developments, which includes Oka and the North Forty at moderate density. And Projection D was all known future developments at maximum density. So, their nuclear option, if you will, is this Projection D. It's a ten-year plan, and in year three, we're already ahead of it with no construction at the North Forty or Oka Road. So, I just wanted to say I'm dismayed that none of our paid administrators from the school are here to present this to you. I'm disappointed that none of our elected school board officials are bringing this to your attention, but their own projections are so far off in year two, year ten, when these projects actually come in, I can't imagine are going to be any better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fock. Jeff Harlan.
Hi, my name's Jeff Harlan. I live at three five four Bella Vista Avenue, Los Gatos. Thank you for this opportunity. I am an native of Los Gatos. I have, my family's been here since nineteen sixty-five. We own three parcels and a condominium. I'm raising two children with my wife in my home on Bella Vista, in the house I grew up in. We have an amazing school system, which is already well over capacity. People cheat and lie to get their children into our schools, to the point where we have a full-time employee dedicated to detecting fraud. The estimates from the developers on the school impact have been proven inaccurate. My math is slightly more pessimistic than an earlier speaker. Bluebird Lane, which my property adjoins, estimated that point three, thirty percent of the homes would add one child to the school. I believe that number is actually thirty-four, so that would be a hundred and seventy percent of the homes there are adding one student. If we apply that math to the North Forty, they estimate at only twenty-six point six percent, or ninety-seven students. If we apply the Bluebird Lane math, we end up with six hundred and nineteen additional students in the Los Gatos School District. So, this leads to some significant flaws in the draft environmental impact plan. I estimate that it's possible that there will be five hundred and twenty-two additional students on top of the ninety-seven they've listed. Their traffic reports are, for both alternates, alternatives are low by factor, by that same factor. So, I'm assuming there would be twelve hundred AM trips and twelve hundred, or two thousand fifty PM trips with alternative A. Alternative B would provide a thousand morning trips and two thousand and ten evening trips. There are also significant gaps in the traffic sampling that they've done on the intersections. There are no samples on Los Gatos Boulevard, the Seating Roberts Way, and Highway Nine, which is where I live. We are in gridlock every morning. We, it's completely gridlocked. There are no samples on East Main Street, right out here. We're in gridlock, there, too, from the high school. There are no samples on University between West Main and Lark Avenue. Gridlock. Our regional housing needs allocation is actually two times higher than the current census. The Association of Bay Area Governments is still using a ten percent figure for our burden for this. The Department of Finance only has revised their estimate to five percent.
Mr. Harlan, I'm going to have to stop you there, but if you have this in writing, it would be very helpful to have you submit it.
I would be happy to.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right behind Mr. Arzy, I'm going to call Jeff Lockridge and Ann Robinson, so if you can be ready as well to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Arzy.
Larry Arzy, I live in town. Wow, isn't this a group of amazing speakers, sophisticated, well-read, and knowledgeable. I'm going to stick with three subjects. Well, two subjects, actually. First one, my question on traffic is, why was the previous planned fifth lane for Lark Avenue to Samaritan not considered? That's the lane that was proposed twenty years ago in that plan. The inside lane provided relief from congested cars that can go in and out of the project. This lane would accommodate all North Forty-oriented traffic and reduce congestion by creating a thoroughfare concept on Los Gatos Boulevard. This is classic scenario in many European cities for controlling traffic, and discussed in numerous community meetings. A wide, tree-lined island will turn out, with turnouts, would obviously be incorporated. This was not brought up, and I want to know why. Second question on traffic, why not a ring road around the North Forty? This circulation scenario is a success story used in so many cities. It can be incorporated into the fifth lane that I just discussed, in front of the North Forty. It would circle the North Forty parameter, directing the bulk of the North Forty onsite traffic into specified entrances and exits, mitigating congestion. This was well discussed in previous community meetings. Why was that not included in the draft? I'm going to go on to housing, which is my last question with the EIR. Did the EIR, EIR, no, excuse me, yeah, did the EIR weigh the possibility of a twenty-year, a twenty-year build-out? It has been suggested that possibly a second EIR should be done for the new Lark Twenty, because that's what it's going to be for twenty, for the next twenty years. And a second EIR based on what's being built for twenty years would be an interesting concept to do. It's not necessary. Now that the North Forty has become the North Twenty, I am surprised the DIR did not comment on the overly intense concentration of housing in the Lark District. There is no guarantee that if or when the rest of the North Forty comes available, that it will ever be built or as promised. This entire project was developer-driven, and I would not be surprised to find out that the last-minute decision to delay the balance of the land sale by the property owner was not already known by the developer going in. So, if there are ways to protect ourselves, I would highly recommend we take that road. Rearranging the housing so that more is built on the north side would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arzy. Jeff Lockridge.
Hi, my name is Jeff Lockridge. I live at one oh nine Paseo Laura, right off of Lark and Oka. The North Forty project has some elements that I believe Los Gatos is lacking right now. Specifically, the more diverse planned housing will provide a much-needed component to our town's housing mix. I am concerned, however, that our current traffic situation, without the future effect of new developments, results in a very low level of service, or LOS. Levels of service at intersections across town are now on the edge of our lower LOS limit rating of D. But it is particularly significant in the north end of town, since that is where both Albright and the North Forty are either approved or planned. The traffic portion of this EIR, this draft EIR, by itself is a whopping eighteen hundred and thirty-six pages. It's filled primarily with traffic counts at various intersections that were chosen. Not all affected intersections were included. What was missing until late this afternoon was an illustration that showed the proposed traffic flow in and around the development, especially specifically on both Los Gatos Boulevard and Lark Avenue. This afternoon, a new version of the tentative map application was posted onto the North Forty website, not onto our town's website. There is a traffic mitigation proposed, but in order to assess whether these suggested mitigations make sense, one would need to see how the traffic would flow both north and south on Los Gatos Boulevard, as well as east and west on Lark Avenue. As an example, one of the intersections that was illustrated, the South Street entrance into the development would have a right turn in, a left turn in across Lark traffic, and a right turn out. This would block Highland Oaks residents' current left turn out. Highland Oaks would be a right turn in and right turn out only. Plus, the right turn out from the South Street onto Lark Avenue would require drivers to merge rapidly across two fast-moving freeway on-ramp lanes to be able to continue west on Lark across the bridge towards Winchester. Piecemeal residential and traffic development on Lark Avenue has resulted in nine separate intersections with traffic lights at six. Some are spaced so closely together that they do not even meet the state's standards. Since this is one of only four ways across our town, and we will be hit with the majority of both Albright and North Forty traffic, automobile, pedestrian, and bicycle safety concerns need to be addressed for the full length of Lark Avenue, not just the portion bordering the development. The proposed traffic flow will eliminate bicycle paths on Lark. They propose both east and west bicycle movement on the north sidewalk bordering Lark, yet propose nothing once a westbound cyclist reaches the Lark Avenue Bridge over Highway Seventeen. The traffic mitigation outlined in this draft EIR is inadequate, short-sighted, and skewed to the North Forty residents at the expense of their existing neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. And behind Ms. Robinson, I have one last card, and that is Ingrid Oakley-Gervan. And if there's anyone else that wishes to speak, they need to come forward with a card. All right, Ms. Robinson, please address us.
Ann Robinson, Charter Oaks. I want to speak tonight regarding the impacts of building heights in the North Forty proposed development on mountain views. In the North Forty Draft Specific Plan under the Council Vision, Section Two Point One, one of the guiding principles to achieve the council's vision of the North Forty development is to embrace hillside views, trees, and open space. In the general plan, it talks about preserving hillside views. In the draft EIR, North Forty Specific Plan, page three dash eight and three dash nine, the North Forty Draft Specific Plan allows for a hotel at forty-five feet, and all residential and non-residential buildings can be up to thirty-five feet tall with a height limitation of twenty-five feet on any building within fifty feet of Lark Avenue. A ten-foot increase in height bonus up to forty-five feet for residential uses may be allowed in the transition district, but requires the development to be affordable housing or that an additional five percent open space be provided on the property. Then it goes on to say that an unspecified increase in height may be allowed for the office or residential uses in the transition district and office uses in the northern district. No minimum additional height is given for this exception, and no additional open space is required for this exception. And an unspecified increase in height may be allowed for a hotel in the transition district or northern district. Again, no minimum additional height is given for this exception. In the draft EIR, North Forty Specific Plan, page three dash eight, it states that the building heights cannot extend such that they significantly interfere with the views of the ridge line. And on page three dash nine, it states that the draft specific plan requires that building heights may not have a significant adverse effect on the ridge line, and the top of the buildings are expected to be below the ridge line. It goes on to state that the impact of the building heights would be less than significant. So, there's no minimum additional height exceptions for the transition district and the northern district, and the buildings are expected to be below ridge line. How does this preserve the hillside views when there is not a limitation on how tall the buildings can be, and it only requires the building to not have an adverse effect on the ridge line, and the buildings are expected to be below ridge line? What does it mean to embrace or preserve the hillside views? If the hillsides are obscured fifty percent by the buildings, does that embrace or preserve the hillside views? When looking at the photos of the visual simulations in the appendices, it only shows the maximum height of a building at forty-five feet. The visual simulations are taken from three viewpoints with three different angles from each viewpoint. By taping the three different angles from each viewpoint together, you get a picture of what you actually see when you drive south on Highway Seventeen. If the EIR states that there is a possibility of additional heights above forty-five feet, why isn't that reflected in the simulations? How do you know that there is not a significant impact when you don't know how high the buildings are going to be, and when you do not know where the buildings are going to be located? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Thank you.
Hi, Ingrid Oakley-Gervan again, and I clearly live off Lark, and you've heard a lot about that. So, one thing I'd asked about before, because there are clearly dangerous hotspots, my soon-to-be sixteen-year-old driver is appalled at the driving on Lark. We have a countdown before you go through a green light, so that you are not hit by a car speeding through a red light. Happens every single day at every single intersection that we go to. She will attest to that. Roundabouts on Lark, absolutely something to think about. You heard something about European cities and how they structure things. We should take a clue and look at that. High congestion, high distribution of residents in small spaces, that's what we're heading towards in this environment. We absolutely need a buffer zone on Lark. To consider not having a buffer zone is crazy. I have ridden a bike across multiple times with many kids, either in front or behind, and I have to say, I clutch my heart every single time we do that, when we go across Lark. It needs to be safe for kids, strollers, elderly to cross. If the idea is to have retail in the North Forty area, which I think would be fabulous, those of us who get in our car to drive to Campbell or Saratoga or downtown Los Gatos would prefer to keep them funds in Los Gatos and the tax dollars here. However, you know, we're just as easy to drive to Campbell or Saratoga at this point. So, if we could walk over there and we had quaint, aesthetically pleasing environment, similar to what you have downtown, I think we would actually utilize it. Now, if there's not walking, strolling paths and things like that, you might not do that as much. So, why wouldn't we encourage it? As people are retiring, we have elderly communities, they need these walkability pathways. Overcrowding in the schools, as a former LGF president last year, I can absolutely attest to this. We went to San Carlos to talk to them about their STEM program. They cut enrollment in middle, in elementaries at four hundred. Ours are six hundred to seven hundred. They cut enrollment at middle school, and have already started to build a new one, at seven hundred. We have a middle school that's almost topping twelve hundred. So, we're in a bad state of affairs, in my opinion, with the current enrollment. Now, I know everyone says, oh, turnover, people will stay, they'll retire, the kids will go on, they'll go off to college, no one else will take that house. But what you see in Los Gatos is because of the good schools, the parents retire elsewhere, the kids take the house, or they slam into different-sized housing, you know, three kids in a bedroom. It's not bothering people. And maybe, again, that's more of what they do in Europe, and we have to think about that, and not think it from our perspective, but from other perspectives. So, I'd like, I don't know if you can apply limits on housing, the number of people in a unit size, five hundred square feet, two people. a unit size, 500 square feet, two people. Senior housing, that's a good thing. Distributing the housing in the retail on both sides, I think that that's something that would be great to think about. I'm not really sure, and I'm very frustrated, why the schools aren't here commenting on the, I don't know if it's political, and they're worried about, they don't want to sound like they have overcrowded schools. Well, they do have overcrowded schools. The schools are overcrowded. I mean, we're going to have 30 or 40 kids in a class. I don't see that as a solution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the last card I have is Woody Needham. Again, if there's anyone else that wishes to speak, they need to come forward. Mr. Needham?
My name is Woody Needham. I live in Azalea Way in Los Gatos. I just wanted to emphasize one point that I put into my written presentation to you folks, and that is, I think the number of housing units, 364, all essentially jammed into the southern Lark Avenue portion is horrible. That's a horrible idea. That's all in the Los Gatos School District. Apparently, the government code says that the money that the town gets from the developer fees, et cetera, is full mitigation, so that can't be questioned. I think that's what you call illegal fiction. And so I think it is incumbent upon the town to do its own mitigation in this regard, and that is this: If there are going to be 364 housing units, I hope there aren't, but if there are going to be, spread them out all over the North Forty so that at least half of them or more are in the north section, which is Cambrian School District, not Los Gatos School District. They deserve, in fact, their schools, they, at one meeting we had probably a couple of years ago, and I've attended virtually every meeting, it was said that they would welcome new students. So why aren't we spreading the housing out? We're not, we shouldn't be here to please the developer. We should be here to serve the town and the residents of this town. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Jason Farwell.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Farwell, 18 Park Avenue in Los Gatos. First and foremost, I'd like to just say how thankful I am to have these citizens down here tonight voicing their concerns. I've been following this project for a long time. I've been at a lot of meetings. And it's fantastic to finally see some outspoken citizens on the impacts of this project. They're going to be monstrous. They're going to impact our schools, they're going to impact our downtown dramatically. And I echo all of the concerns that have already been voiced tonight, but my major issue that I have with this draft EIR relates to our downtown and the fact that we still don't know the square footage of our downtown and how it compares to the proposed development. I've done my calculations, they're rough calculations. I think it's somewhere around approximately 230,000 square feet from Highway 9 to North Santa Cruz Avenue. That's just the downtown district core there. And this is all ground floor. So that's 230,000 square feet, and they're proposing over, I think, 500,000 at the North Forty. And for this draft EIR to propose that there's not going to be a disparate impact to our downtown, I think is ridiculous. It will be dramatic. The parking issue in our downtown is terrible. It hasn't been addressed. We need a new garage at a minimum. This parking that's going to be on the North Forty is going to be so accommodating, people are going to drive in there all day long because they're going to complain about going downtown and the parking downtown. Grovesner is a monster real estate company. They're very good at what they do. This is going to be an absolutely beautiful project that's going to impress not only Los Gatos, but the entire Bay Area, and it is going to be a regional draw. It's not going to be a town draw. And our town will forever be changed. So I just ask you to view this project with open eyes and really sift through this 1,800-page draft EIR. It's a monster. I couldn't look at it all. It was too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, it's Brent, and then I'm thinking it's Ventura. Ventura, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this hearing. Couple items, a lot of these issues have been hit on already. I don't want to get repetitive here. But one of the issues I do want to speak to is the wildlife impacts. You go out of that site there, it's like going back in time, 50, 60 years of Los Gatos, back when the town was mostly orchards. Because it's been left undeveloped for so long that there is an incredible amount of wildlife there. I've had the opportunity to be there in the early mornings and late evenings, and I personally have seen cougar, coyotes, fox, snakes. I can't tell you if they're garter or gopher snakes, but I believe one of them might be endangered. I've seen golden eagle out there. And it seems the wildlife survey was completely inadequate in failing to identify any of these, and there was no relocation plan or any real plan identifying the EIR. What are we going to do with these precious last animals, wildlife, we have in town? Obviously, they may not be compatible with the type of development that is being discussed here, but that doesn't mean they should just be bulldozed over. And I think we're enlightened enough, we've learned enough over the past generations since this town has developed with the intensity it has, not to make those mistakes again. So I hope that would be corrected in the EIR revisions. The other two points I want to make is, we're looking at a lot of intense development here. I know there is a great need in this community for senior housing. I didn't see a lot of discussion of that, the possibility of exploring that in the EIR. I'd like to see alternatives to discuss the viability of that and see if that could be incorporated. It certainly is a less intense traffic generator than some of the other uses being discussed. The other point was, you know, spreading the housing throughout the entire site. I personally disagree with the extrapolated attendance figures for the elementary district and the high school district. It's hard to believe with that many houses, we're going to generate 50 or 60 students. I just don't believe that's possible. I think we're going to have severe impacts. The school's already impacted. I have a child there right now, and I can tell you, it's, the classes are getting awfully large. There's another school district that serves the property, and they would probably love to have some additional students there. They certainly would sure like to have some of the property tax revenue, and that's something we should look at as an alternative to the site. And I believe that addresses my issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last card I have is Jennifer Grul.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Graywall, and I live at Charter Oaks in Los Gatos. I want to say thank you to the Planning Commission because previously you have been very attentive to the EIR, especially in the Albright Way project, where your recommendation to the town was that the EIR superior alternative was what should have been built. It was the conservative alternative, and it would have been nice to have had that lesser impact on that end of town. Our end of town is a history of very bad decisions. There's five neighborhoods off of Lark with only one way in and out. There's no access to southbound 85 from Winchester. Albright exceeded the environmentally superior plan, as the EIR recommended. There are six traffic lights in less than one mile on Lark Avenue. The coordination of those lights are between two agencies, Caltrain and the town. 17 northbound off-ramp is a yield sign to Lark Avenue, not a stop sign, so you have merge issues in the morning at that intersection. There were traffic studies that were ordered as part of the Albright Way approval after it made it to the town council for approval, and those haven't been completed yet. And what I found out when we met with the developer the other night was that his traffic mitigation only faces his portion of the property as it affects Los Gatos Boulevard, Bascom, and Lark Avenue. So there is no complete cohesive guess as to how all of these pieces are going to fit I don't think there was consideration of possibly doing an entrance to Highway 17 on the backside of this property. The developer, we discussed with him whether or not the gas station was going to be purchased, and he told us it was not economically feasible for him to attempt to purchase the gas station. But yet, that gas station property is going to be a bottleneck in the traffic as you merge from Los Gatos Boulevard onto Lark Avenue. Evidently, the setbacks are such that, as he put it, he would only be able to build a sign on the corner of the property that would be left from the setbacks. But what's going to happen by not having those setbacks and having the gas station stay is going to be yet another narrow spot on Lark that then goes to a wide spot, that then crosses the bridge, that then goes back to a narrow spot. Lark Avenue is a deadly accident again waiting to happen, and it is just getting more and more so that that is our inevitable future. Today, it took me to get out of Charter Oaks, three minutes to turn right. I had a meeting at the Los Gatos Parks and Rec Department. It took me three minutes to make a right turn from Charter Oaks Drive onto Lark Avenue in order to make the left onto University at the light. That's crazy.
Your time is up. We thank you. If you have written remarks, please submit them to us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're now going to close the, this portion of the meeting. And Mr. Paulson, do you want to state the statutory dates again so that the public hears them?
So just for everyone's reminder, the comment period ends on May 19th, which is next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. So if anyone wants to submit additional written comments via either mail, email, or dropping them off to the Community Development Department and/or Clerk's Office, then we will accept those until 5:00 p.m. on May 19th.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess, just so that we can leave, have those of you who wish to leave, we can have an orderly departure, and, but we welcome you all to stay if you'd like to do that. So we'll reconvene at, what time is it? 9:15? 8:15? Okay, convene at 8:15. Thank you. I'm now going to reopen the Planning Commission meeting of May 14th, 2014, and I will call Agenda Item 2. This item will consider a plan development, application PD 13002, the General Plan Amendment, GP 13003, and Environmental Impact Report, EIR 13-003, for property located at 375 Knolls Drive. This evening, the applicant is requesting approval of a general plan amendment from public to office and a plan development to demolish the existing building and to construct 40 single-family residences on property zoned zero. Or O. By a show of hands, may I see the Commissioners who have visited the property? Are there any disclosures from any Commissioner? Seeing none, Ms. Avala, I believe you're going to give us the report this evening.
Commission did receive two desk items for this application or this project. One was a plan sheet that was inadvertently left out of the conceptual development plan set, and there were also two additional comment letters that were received after the Planning Commission packets were delivered last week. The project site is part of a Santa Clara County surplus property that is located on the north side of Knolls Drive, west of Capri Drive. The site has frontage on both Capri and Knolls. It wraps the corner property that is on the northwest corner of Capri and Knolls. It's a 3.3-acre site. It was previously considered for an affordable housing overlay zone, but it was ultimately not designated. The property is zoned O, office. The general plan designation is public. The Conceptual Development Advisory Committee considered concept plans for development of this property in June 2013. They looked at both a residential and an office proposal and provided comments. The minutes of that meeting were attached to the staff report. The PD application was filed in March of 2013. Originally, the project was 45 units, and it was subsequently reduced to 40 units. Of those 40 units, five of them are below-market price units. The General Plan Committee considered the General Plan Amendment in June of 2013. The General Plan Committee did recommend that the PD overlay just be added to the existing office zoning, so it would be O-PD, and that the General Plan Amendment be from public to office to retain the most flexibility for development of the property. Residential is a possible use in an office zone with a use permit, or in this case, a plan development. Office would also be an option. That's the whole point of it being a little more flexible. So the General Plan Amendment is to change the land use designation from public to office, and the proposal for, the plan development proposal is to demolish the existing building on the site, which was formerly a medical office building, and to construct the 40 new units. The commission is a recommending body on these applications. The town council will be the final review authority. There are several exceptions requested under the plan development. One is reduced setbacks. There's a request to exceed the FAR, to exceed the 40% building coverage maximum, and there are building heights greater than 30 feet. The office zone does allow a 35-feet in height. However, single-family zones do not allow more than 30 feet, and to be consistent with past approvals for small lot, single-family, 30 feet has not been exceeded on any of those projects. So that's why staff recommended that the 30-foot height be adhered to for this proposal. There are two- and three-story units. All of the three-story units would exceed 30 feet. There is a 2011 council resolution that established allowable land uses for the property as office, or if it's a residential project, it was intended to be an affordable housing overlay zone or AHAZ project. Since the property wasn't designated as an AHAZ site, that may now be an obsolete, but it is still in a standing resolution. It's still there unless the council were to amend or rescind it. So the proposal is in conflict with that resolution. So something would be, need to be done with that resolution in order to approve this project. Other issues are, as I already mentioned, where the three-story units exceeding 30 feet, and then there are some outstanding design recommendations that are discussed in the staff report, that a number of those still, you know, need some attention and need to be worked on. Some of them could be deferred to architecture and site approval, but greater issues such as separation between units and massing and height should be addressed through the PD. For environmental review, the applicant did elect to do an EIR for the project. A negative deck could have been done, but to be, you know, fully disclose the project, fully vet it, the applicant elected to do the EIR, and so that was prepared. It was released for public review on December 2nd. 45-day review period ended on January 17th, 2014. The commission did accept comments on that draft EIR on January 8th. The final EIR in responses to comments was completed, and that was distributed for public review on May 2nd. That had a 10-day review period, so that has ended, that ended on Monday, the 12th. And no subsequent, we didn't receive any follow-up comments on the final EIR. A mitigation monitoring and reporting plan was also prepared with mitigation measures that is included with your staff report, and all of the mitigation measures have been incorporated into the PD ordinance as performance standards. The applicant had two community meetings to propose, to present the project to neighbors and interested members of the community. They also met with a number of interested residents to discuss their project, and I think they'll probably touch on that further when they present the project this evening. There were a number of comment letters that were received, approximately 28, and those were all attached to the staff report and then the two in the desk items. Majority of those are in favor of the proposal. There are a couple of comment letters that raise concerns, particularly from some residents that live adjacent to the site that were concerned about view and visual impact. The commission's options on the proposal this evening are to forward a recommendation to the town council, or to continue the applications and providing direction to staff and the applicant for desired plan changes, or to forward it with revised performance standards. The list of all the items that need to be touched on for, in the recommendation, are included in the staff report in the recommendations section. And that includes, concludes staff's report. If you have any questions, we are available. The environmental consultant is present if there's any questions on the environmental review, and I also, we also have engineering staff here for engineering-related matters.
Thank you, Ms. Avala. Are there any questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner Seac.
Thank you, Ms. Avala. I wanted to get a little bit more information about the June 26th general plan meeting. Unfortunately, I was absent that day, so wasn't able to participate. Unfortunately, I was absent that day, so wasn't able to participate. But I understand the, the idea that they recommended it be changed to office to provide maximum flexibility for the applicant. When this was discussed, was there actual, was there an actual application before them, or was there just a discussion on the actual land use and the options available for that particular site?
The, the meeting of the General Plan Committee was held after the application was in process. The committee was primarily discussing the General Plan Amendment that was proposed and the council resolution, so they weighed in on both those items. They didn't, we weren't asking for, you know, details on the, or for them to provide input on the project itself. It was specifically the General Plan Amendment that was being proposed and what the recommendation was on that, and then what the recommendation was regarding the council resolution on land use.
Okay. And then a second question, if I may, and procedurally, should this move forward tonight or at a future meeting? It's going to be bundled together, right? So that the General Plan Amendment that goes to council would also carry with it the application? And the reason, let me just back up. The reason why I'm asking is, right now, the application is only residential. There's no office.
Right.
And I understand it's permitted use. So given that there's no flexibility that is needed, is there, is there a chance that the General Plan Amendment could move forward and that still allows that flexibility? Or is it bundled together so that what moves forward to council, whether tonight or a future meeting, is going to actually reflect the application that it's attached to?
It is all connected. The General Plan Amendment could be acted on independently because it would make sense to change the land use designation to office professional, which would be consistent with the existing zoning. But it is, it is needed for this project to work. They must do the General Plan Amendment in conjunction with the PD or ahead of the PD. And certainly, the council resolution could be acted on independently. The, the General Plan Amendment could be acted on independently. Certification of the EIR could occur.
Okay, thank you.
And that was going to be one of my questions, so let me just ask it in a slightly different way. In other words, we can bifurcate these issues tonight? So we can pass the General Plan Amendment, correct? Can we do that and still continue or deny or any of our other options? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Avila?
Yes, you could have different recommendations. You may recommend the General Plan Amendment, certification of the EIR, and potentially not recommend the project at this point if it needs more work. And, and it, it could be. This whole thing does work as a package. It does work all as a bundle, but there are, you're correct. There are some things that could be acted on independently. The, the certification of the EIR, the, the resolution and the General Plan Amendment could have actions that, and then the PD could potentially not be acted on.
So then those, those recommendations would not, they would, we would recommend they're going to Town Council, but they actually would not go until the rest of the package was ready? Or?
They could go, we actually, staff did discuss this with the applicant. We, it is possible to take the council resolution on land use forward to get a read on that. If that's something that the commission and/or council has a concern about the land use, that would be really important to resolve that issue first. And we did talk about possibly sending the resolution forward for council deliberation and direction to staff. So it could be done that way.
All right. And then I have just one last question. Can you confirm that all of the surrounding property is in Los Gatos? Because I know Campbell is right there, so I was trying to look myself to see if all of the buildings that we've referred to as the neighborhood is-
Yes, it is. Everything surrounding, everything abutting, all the properties abutting this project site are indeed in the town. You don't get into Campbell until you cross Parr Avenue. So the, the properties along the edge of the property, Villa Visona, Open Doors, those are all in the town. Those all, those are about the property. When you get onto the opposite side of Parr Avenue, you're in Campbell. The shopping center across the street is in the town. And yes, everything is surrounding and immediately abutting, it is in Los Gatos.
I just wanted to confirm that, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Birch.
Yes, I have a question concerning, also concerning the June 26th meeting of the General Plan Committee. In discussing the, the fact that this is zoned office, there was a comment in here where it was asked about analysis for office use that has been provided, to see if they had truly analyzed providing office rather than residential in the space. It seems that the applicant said that he could provide that information. However, I didn't see that in our packet. Did the applicant ever provide information where perhaps he had done research on the viability of providing office rather than residential?
The applicant has done some research, and I, they did not submit anything in writing, but I believe they can answer that question this evening and advise the commission on, on what analysis they did and what the conclusions were.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
If this were left as, as O, would residential with a use permit be permitted?
It's a possible use, yes.
And what would the difference then be? I mean, I understand what you said about greater flexibility, but since we have a concrete project before us, I'm not sure we need flex, we need flexibility. So what does it do to the project if we left it at O and considered a use permit for residential uses? In what respect, if at all, does it impact the project as proposed?
If the applicant wanted to propose residential with a use permit, they would not be able to propose some of the exceptions such as reduced setbacks, an increase in FAR would, would still be potentially possible because there are findings specific to increasing the FAR in the town code. But some of the exceptions they're asking for through the plan development would not be possible if they did a straight use permit. So it would change the project as it's proposed.
And the staff has recommended denial on this project, right?
Correct.
Give you the reasons again for the recommendation?
Staff recommended denial because of the inconsistency with the council resolution on land use, and because of the design issues that were unresolved, and the three-story height of the, not the three stories, but the height above 30 feet for about half of the units.
Wouldn't those latter issues be addressed by not rezoning it? In other words, treat it as a use permit on O zoning? No, you wouldn't have to deal with those problems because you wouldn't have them, they would not have the right to get them.
They could ask for the height they're proposing under an office zone because the office zone does allow 35 feet. So that is something that could be requested.
Except that the same response of what it allows versus what we normally do would be there.
Sure. Staff would still have the same concern. We don't, the town hasn't approved a project's residential, single-family detached product that is above 30 feet.
Why should the town be supportive of a switch from O to O-PD? I realize you're recommending denial, but not on that basis. You're not saying, "Don't do that, we're recommending against that." I don't quite understand why you're not recommending against that.
The rezoning portion of it?
Yes.
Or the, it could be zoned RM. The General Plan Committee weighed in on the office zoning. I think the reason they felt the office zoning was more appropriate was because if this project doesn't move forward, then a possible development of the site could be office. And if you zoned it residential, then you're dictating it will be residential, and you don't have the ability to do an office project. Or if the property was developed as being proposed, or in some variation of a residential, and redevelops in the future, you don't have the office flexibility any longer. That's what I believe the committee was alluding to when they said it's more flexibility. If you have an office zoning, you still have the ability to do an office project. If the office, if it's rezoned to residential, then you are restricting it to residential use.
But if you leave it office, you can do residential too. And if you do, if you, instead of doing that, you may get office PD, you can do residential too, without getting a use permit, and apparently more, more loosely. In other words, fewer restrictions.
Correct. The PD, as you know, offers the opportunity for additional flexibility above and beyond what's allowed by the office zone.
So there's no benefit to the town? It's only a benefit to the developer?
That will have to be discussed as, you know, you deem fit with the project in particular. You may feel that it's not appropriate for the plan development based on the design and the layout of what's currently proposed with the PD, given that without a PD, they couldn't accomplish this configuration.
Commissioner Bondamy.
Is there a difference between office and office professional?
No, the office professional is the land use designation. Office, an office zone would allow any type of office, administrative and professional and/or medical office.
Thank you.
All right, we will now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant will have five minutes. And Mr. Trusini, I believe you are the applicant. However, please step forward and still give us your name and address.
Happy to do so, Madam Chair and, and members of the commission this evening. I am Mark Trusini. I am the applicant, and I happen to reside in the town of Los Gatos, and the family's been here for many, many years. I reside at 111 La Soon Court, a project that I developed a little over 10 years ago now. And I'm here before you this evening on land that my firm, KT Properties, is under contract to purchase from the county of Santa Clara. It is excess property, and we've been under contract going on close to two years now. KT Properties has owned and developed property throughout the Bay Area for over 25 years. And during that 25-year period of time, we've developed three properties in the, in the town of Los Gatos. As I mentioned, subdivision that I reside in, property off of Wooded View Road, and a six-acre site off of Clifton Avenue in Los Gatos. The proposed project before you this evening, as is mentioned by Suzanne Avila, is a 35-market rate homes and five BMP units. The property, or project density is 12 units to the acre, and our homes range in height from 24 feet to 33 feet in height. The property is Z-shaped, totaling 3.34 acres. Our original design was to, to meet the, the affordable housing overlay zone, and that included 32 market rate units and a 50-unit senior housing development, for a total of 82 units or 24 units to the acre. After considerable deliberation over the affordable housing overlay zone and on the Knolls site, it was determined by the, by the town to look at five alternate sites for the affordable housing overlay zone and not to include the Knolls Drive property. After considerable evaluation of the project site for both office and residential, we submitted plans for what we believe is the highest and best use for the property. The project has been designed as a medium-density, single-family homes for working professionals, young families, and empty nesters looking to continue to reside in the town of Los Gatos, excuse me. We are fully aware at this time that we do not have the support of the planning staff, but here in front of you this evening to hear directly from you how we can modify the residential plans to better address the comments from the planning department and your own comments as we move the residential project forward. I want to introduce my team here tonight. Don Ruth Roth with the Dolan Group, Beverly Bryant with B3 Consulting, Kimberly Horn with, Kimberly Horn, Laura Forbes with Kimberly Horn is here tonight, and Sue Dillon with Charles Davidson, our civil engineer. At this time, I'd like Laura Forbes to come up and address the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Laura Worthington Forbes. I realize my time is short here, so if you want to call me back up afterwards to ask additional questions, please feel free to do so. As Mark noted, we have worked very closely with staff and with members of the community, businesses, and residents to design a project that really meets the intent of the 2020 General Plan, and one that residents would also be very proud of. And to that end, though, we're concerned with the staff report statement on page 12 that indicates that we may be in conflict or not consistent with a few of those policies. And just to generalize, since those policies and the goals are all in front of you, each of those addresses new development and their intent to blend, harmonize, and integrate with the existing neighborhood context and with the character, as well as to be consistent and compatible with existing development within the area. Based on, on those assessments, we did gather considerable input from the community and reduce the height of the, of the units, particularly those adjacent to Capri and Knolls, increase the setbacks, reduce the number of units facing Knolls and facing Capri. And we have an EIR that the town produced that states that the neighborhood context really is quite minimal in this area, that the, the site as proposed fits very nicely visually into the integration of the community, and that this project would really serve to unify and create a sense of residential community. In terms of compliance with the policy, or the housing policy, I guess that's it.
That's right. Your time is up. However, Mr. Trusini, I'm going to give you three more minutes at the end, and you have filled out an individual speaker card. So procedurally, staff, she spoke on behalf of the applicant, so do we move on?
Yes.
Yes, so we have to move on.
Thank you. I'd be available for questions later.
Thank you. Yes, we can ask questions right now. Well, I think that means Commissioner O'Donnell is going to lead off.
I'd like to direct your attention to Exhibit 12, which is the letter of the Cannon Design Group. You should have that available to you. I'll give you a minute to, do you have it?
I do, not at my disposal, the dais, but I can get it.
It's Exhibit 12 in the package. Okay. We've been told several times that we have to give a lot of weight to what the, what the town architect tells us, and unless we make a finding for, for two reasons, which I won't bore you with, we should follow the recommendations of, of the architect. So when I looked at this today and previously, I noticed there are some comments he made that apparently have not been addressed by you. For example, on page three, under overview, he says, "The approach to the layout and design of the project is not all that unusual in some Bay Area communities, but the inclusion of three-story tall, single-family detached homes will be a departure from other recent small lot subdivisions in Los Gatos." So are you aware of that factually, that this is sort of a different project for us?
I am aware that the staff has made that statement, yes.
And the architect?
And the architect, yes.
And your response to that is what?
I'll have Mark answer that, thank you.
Is, is one person going to be able to deal with the architect? I'll be glad to deal with that, or if we both want to, that's okay too.
Sure. I just would think it's more appropriate for, for myself to answer that particular question because it really goes right to the heart of why it is that we're planning or proposing a plan development for this particular location. And I want to really step back a little further before answering your question because I did review Larry Cannon's report several times, along with Don Ruth Roth and the balance of the team. But if I want to step back for a moment, the, the reason why we're proposing the project as a planned development is to provide for a medium-density project, not different than other medium-density projects in the town of Los Gatos, with the exception of our surrounding neighboring properties and our close proximity to Highway 85, bus transportation, and light rail. So I really look at it as a smart growth opportunity for the town, as an infill site, to provide for additional housing that you wouldn't otherwise be able to provide at that level of density if they were two-story units, and that's why we're proposing the three-story units. They're, they're a more slender plan, and therefore, we are able to provide additional density by going up to a third-story proposal. So let me address your question with respect to-
Before you do that, because I want to address what you just said, did you consider going down? In other words, the basement?
Yes, I have looked at going down, and that is something that is, is something that we can consider, looking to go down and, and gain some square footage that we'd otherwise lose if we lost the third story. And I think that's something I'd really want to discuss- And I think that's something I'd really want to discuss openly this evening, if that's a direction that we need to consider, we will look at that. But I do want to address Larry Cannon's comments, is that it is inconsistent with other projects in the town of Los Gatos. And I'm not trying to emulate other projects in the town of Los Gatos. I'm trying to design a project that really fits well, at least in our view, fits well within that context and that neighborhood. And also, if you want, and I don't know what page it's on, but Mr. Cannon uses the term, you know, "consider" the removal of the three-story units. And when someone uses the term "consider," that's what we do. We consider it, whether or not it's appropriate or isn't appropriate, and goes on to discuss the side elevations that one sees when they're driving off the drive aisle off of Capri and whether or not we have enough articulation along that side elevation and/or do we need some additional stepping back of the third floor units or additional articulation along that, those side elevations. That's what we were considering with our review and we did not provide Mr. Cannon photographs of other projects that would have elements. What we wanted to do is actually model the project, so we had a firsthand look. So the modeling that we have to show you this evening is very reflective of what the homes will look like and I would love to have Don Ruth Roth actually walk you through the design if it's appropriate this evening.
Fine. Just, I think, and maybe I'm wrong, so I'm not, it might be easier if we went through Mr. Cannon's letter at one time and then you can revisit whatever you want to. And if that's not the best way to go, I'll be glad to withhold, but there are a few questions Mr. Cannon raises that I thought we could just address now.
That would be fine. Can I invite Don Ruth Roth, the architect, to come up and really address those? I think that'd be very appropriate.
Maybe if I, okay, so we've got, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but there, Mr. Cannon raises about, I guess, six issues, one of which is bulk and mass, one of which is not enough open space, one of which is limited use of stone not consistent with the residential guidelines. All these things were raised and not addressed by you.
Well, that's what I believe Don can address very clearly as far as what is his thoughts with respect to some of those comments that Mr. Cannon made? How did we address those? And if we didn't do those, what, why didn't we address those?
That's fine. I thought it would be better for you. Seth, okay, with the chair?
Yes, and I have a card for Mr. Ruth Roth as well.
You want to take these one at a time? We can do it that way?
However you'd like, Commissioner.
Do you have, do you have the letter there, the Cannon letter?
Cheers.
And the first comment we've been discussing is on page three and it's the very first paragraph under overview.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the second paragraph of that two-paragraph section. So unless you've committed to memory, you might want to look at it.
I've got it in front of me.
Okay. So I guess you would agree that it is a departure from what we normally have done in Los Gatos?
Yes, and I would echo Mark's comment. For me, this site is about context. I have a three-story office building to the north of me. I have three-story projects behind me. And so we created something that is comparable in bulk and mass in the middle of our project. Around the project edges, we stepped down as we came out towards the street, we stepped down the project to two-story. So we look at the project as a whole, not as a, not as pieces. And I don't look at these particular house designs as individual houses. We talk about them as single-family because they are detached and they are single-family. But when we look at them from an architectural perspective, in our, in our shot, we look at it as a whole, you know, it's a group of houses together. So when you get to the ends, the middles, where they're closer together, tend to be more vertical, more blank. When you get to the end of the row, we break down. We have a two-story element on the edge. And so we try to look at it as a group of, a group of pieces rather, a group of individual things rather than just by themselves.
The 21 three-story buildings, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Nineteen, I think, were two stories.
Yes.
Something like that. If you look at page three, he also has a drawing there.
Mm-hmm.
And he says, "All three-story sidewalls," and he shows what I think he's getting at, which is a, the impact of those three-story sidewalls. Do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I would disagree that those are all three-story sidewalls. Let's go to, if we go to this exhibit, we'll get there in just a moment. So we're looking at the entire site here. If you look...
Yes, if you're going to approach the screen in any way, just take the microphone with you.
That's fine. I think, I have a pointer now, so I don't have to go over there. If you look, so as you, as you come in this street, yes, we have, we have a combination of a two-story house here. You have not a three-story wall. It does have a portion of three-story wall, but then there's a, there's a two-story element here. There's a two-story element. So it's a combination. I would disagree with Mr. Cannon. I've known him for 20 years, worked with him on other projects in other towns. I would disagree with him in this case. Put two architects in a room, you got two different opinions.
Well, this is not a subjective matter. He says that, he marks the buildings that he alleges that are three stories and he says the P4s are three stories. Nobody responded to that comment by saying, "No, they're not." But tonight, you're saying that...
I've, I've had, I've had numerous conversations with him talking about those very things.
Okay. I understand your answer. Now, if you turn to page five, under open space, he is concerned that there is not enough open space, and what is your response to that?
I guess I would respectfully disagree with him there. We have, we have both private yards on the two-story units. We have decks on the three-story units and private yards, and we have a common open space for the entire project. So there's a combination of both private and public open space within the project.
He says, "The amount of common open space, however, has been changed from a common landscaped area adjacent to the exterior street to a small park area to the north end of the parcel and what appears to be a community garden." In other words, the common area is now moved to one portion of the property, which is not as accessible to the rest, but that is the only common area. Do you have a response to that?
We have congregated the common space in one area. We created a community garden. I've found in numerous projects in the Northwest, when we create a community garden, they're very popular. I have a project currently in Seattle that we have two in a two-phase project. The second phase isn't built out yet, yet the, the community garden is already full and active with the residents that are already there. So we chose to do that. We did choose to collect it in one place.
Okay. And the other comment he makes is paragraph seven, where he talks about the garage entry relationship and he says, "The conditions discussed there are not consistent with our residential guidelines." What is your position on that?
He's correct. It is not consistent with the residential guidelines.
So you've chosen to ignore our residential guidelines?
I've, yes, and I guess guidelines are just that. They're guidelines, not, not an ordinance.
And on building massing, which is paragraph eight, he says, "The three-story units seem very bulky. It consists largely of three-story masses with only a small facade depth. Changes in the exterior form," and then he shows some drawings to illustrate that point. Obviously, you must not agree with that either.
Yes.
And could you maybe tell me why?
Well, I guess, again, we talk about this as a group of houses, not as individual units. So when you get down to the end of the project, you, we're coming down in mass. When we're in the middle of the project, we're larger mass. This is how I mass multifamily buildings when they're attached. We break down the buildings at the ends and that's how I approach this project as a whole. We have, right there is fine. We collected the three-story to the center. We've broken down the mass this way and we've broken down the mass this way as we approach the public streets. So we've tried to look at it, rather than individual houses, we've tried to look at it as a whole project.
Okay. And then he says at paragraph nine, "The applicant proposes vinyl windows, faux wood shutters and stucco over formed trim at the windows and doors. This seems like a lower quality of detailing than I have seen at other projects in the Los Gatos in the past." My understanding is your response is, "Yeah, but that lasts longer."
They do last longer, yes.
But it isn't consistent with what we normally do in Los Gatos?
It may or may not be. I'm...
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor, and also are we, are you addressing your questions to the architect?
In this case, yes. And I, it's just a small question, but your open space...
Yes, ma'am.
With the visual, the visual illustration I saw in your plan...
Mm-hmm.
The garden area raised beds looked like there were three raised beds. Is that correct? And can you tell me approximately the size?
Landscapes architect here, we're out of, okay, 10 or 12. Hold on. We've switched from architecture to landscape. So, so the raised beds run here and here. So there's four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, looks like to me.
With a small path way circling them?
Yeah, with a path on each side and then a path in between each one. So you get access to them.
So is that path like, what, two feet on each side?
Oh, this? No, we would, this would be like four.
I mean the pathway that circles the beds.
It, I would say, yeah, it's four feet between each bed. And the pathways, yeah, but those look about the same width. And then, and then we have a play area down here at the end. So there's, there's rock-like structures for the kids to climb on and grass around. So it's a mix of use.
Oh, I see. Okay, that wasn't in the report. All right, thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Talisfor, just, do you have one more quick question?
I do, and I cannot find the...
All right, I'll come back to you, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bondami?
Do any of these units have driveways?
Full driveways that you could park on? No.
Yes. Okay. My next question, what special site characteristics exist on your parcel to justify a planned development as opposed to following our zoning regulations and residential design guidelines?
You want to take that? I'll let you take that.
Sure. I'm happy to address that as well. As I mentioned in my opening comments, it is a Z-shaped property. It has somewhat of a narrow frontage on both Knolls and Capri. I'm not going to stand here tonight and tell you that we couldn't build less homes and build homes or design homes to, to the 5,000-square-foot range. And I think that's the smallest lot size that's available under your current downtown zoning designation. What I'm stating and the reason I want to pursue a planned development is I don't think that would be the most efficient use of the site. It would be a misusing, a site that's oddly configured and not providing the opportunity to provide more housing, which is needed. By providing 35 market rate units, we're able to provide five BMP units. And of those BMP units, I believe three of them would be for the low income and two would be for the, is that right, Beverly? Low and moderate income and go a long ways towards the affordable housing needs, the arena numbers that the town of Los Gatos has today. So if we were to build, say, 12 units on the site, I don't know what that calculation would be for your affordable housing, but it's going to be a lot less than the five BMP units. And then you're going to be, build 12 housing units right within walking distance of shopping, walking distance of medical, automotive and employment centers. Employment centers just across Winchester in the Dell Avenue industrial area, and there's quite a few businesses in that location that we've met with that are very supportive of housing in this location to house their employees that are commuting an hour and a half, two hours away to come to work. And then obviously, the Albright development that's occurring will also generate jobs and these people will need homes. So I really look at it as a smart growth decision and not defaulting to what is just allowed under the current straight zoning of housing.
If this is entry-level housing, what's the price point other than the affordable units?
Well, my, my, right now in the market, I'm going to say that the price points would be in the, in the $500 a square foot range. So if it's a 2,000-square-foot unit, that'd be $1 million. 2,200-square-foot unit would be, what is that, $1 million?
And that's entry-level for teachers and...
I don't think it's entry-level for teachers, no. It's going to be a, that's what the pricing of the housing will go for, I believe, in today's market. When I talk about affordable, I believe the average house price in the town of Los Gatos is 1.6 million. So I think if you look at the overall average pricing in the town of Los Gatos, this is the affordable alternative. I think the below-market priced homes will allow an opportunity for teachers and firefighters and those that may not have the, the income level to qualify for a 1.1 or 1.2 million-dollar home. But a lot of working couples do have that income stream and they're young working couples that would have that income stream to be able to afford a home and that may not otherwise be able to afford a home at 1.6 or 1.7.
I also have a concern with your lifestyle imagery on exhibit 16A1-11, and it doesn't appear to depict the scale of the project. You know, there's views of grassy knolls and people strolling throughout with dogs and young children with bicycles. Is this going to fit into that common area, the community garden area, the complex? I'm not sure how that fits in.
I believe the imagery is just that. It's imagery to give you a sense of what a community, what you're looking for when you're designing a, a community of homes. We do have some modeling and imagery of individuals walking and strolling the, the project site and that is at, to scale. Those are scaled individuals and scaled dogs and the actual scale of the, the units themselves. We're not trying to pull anything on anyone. That's exactly what they'll be looking at. I think some of the comments that Larry Cannon shares in his review of the project is when one stands right next to a three-story building and if they're five feet, five inches tall, they look a little dwarfed compared to a 33-foot home. I don't doubt that. But again, I, I, I also don't doubt that when I stand next to a four-story office building, I look a little smaller and I'm out of scale. But when I'm looking at the context of a neighborhood, and there was a question asked whether or not we have driveways, we don't have driveways, but we're also facing a lot of our front door entrances out into the, the street and having our garage in the back of the units where we can provide that. So we don't just have a row of garage doors that one's looking at in a traditional single-family subdivision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seac.
Thank you. And before we move forward, in terms of disclosure, because of being on the general plan committee in affordable housing, Mr. Trusini, as his team have been at several, so I have heard different iterations of these concepts and just wanted to make sure that that was disclosed. One of the things I wanted to ask was, how did you choose your prototype? So you understand our concerns about the lack of open space. You understand, I understand the medium density that you're trying to achieve. It seems that if you do attached homes, townhomes, rural homes, you could achieve that density and still provide that open common space that, that is required, that we are seeking it. And you hit a smaller and lower affordability price point, which you are also trying to achieve. So give me the rationale between the single-family homes versus the attached home prototype.
Sure, I'm happy to do so. And we did look and lay out the site for a townhome development. We were in the density range of 18 to 20 units to the acre with that. Part of it, and when we're on the committee, when we looked at townhome development, the thought was, you know, could we allow the townhomes to be upwards of 35 feet as long as the garage was tucked, you know, under the, the unit themselves? And in today's world and townhouse designs and developments, different than they were done 30 years ago, you do end up with higher elevations on the, on the units. But the determination of whether or not we wanted to design for a townhouse development or a single-family home development, small lot development, the determination was not to say, well... to say, well, by doing this, we're going to have less common area or open space. In fact, right now, this particular plan between the private open space and the common open space, we have approximately 40% of the site as common and private open space. And one of the reasons why I looked at doing the single-family homes and very comfortable with the, the private space that we have today for entertaining and the common open space is, again, a lifestyle choice. People today go to ballparks and Little League games. They go to the Creek Trails. They go to Jack Fisher Park. And that's where they're spending their time in recreating. And when they're in, back home and they're coming home for the evening and they're having a barbecue and a few friends over, they may take a stroll. They may like to walk over to the community garden and relax, but they're not, we're, as the world is changing, less and less are we doing 8,000 square foot lawns that we're mowing and, and, you know, playing baseball in our front yards. When I grew up in, in this Bay Area, I was able to, you know, kick a football the length of my driveway. You, you don't do that any longer. You can still have that if you're obviously, if you're buying a one-acre site in the town of Los Gatos or a large lot and those are available. But today's lifestyle with working professionals, young families, and empty nesters, you're not spending a tremendous amount of time wanting to maintain a, a large yard. So it was purposely done that way. From a builder's standpoint, the reason why you don't see stacked condominiums and fewer townhomes is litigation. You build attached walls, you build flats, you're going to, you're building yourself a lawsuit down the road. I don't care how much you, and how much attention to detail you pay, you will be sued. I'm not saying you won't be sued as it's building single-family homes. That can happen as well, but the litigation that comes into play, that the homeowners' associations get hired, the fees get higher with that. So to your point about maybe the homes are $900,000 for a townhome, your HOA fees could be much higher with that common area space than you would have with the single-family detached when it's only just the landscaping alone. So there's a lot of reasons why one looked at it. We did look at that density range and, and that's what we'd be looking at.
A quick follow-up?
Yes, let's make it quick. What I was thinking is that if we could just ask, we're going to call Mr. Tercini back again, and so perhaps if, if we can shorten our questions now and have the public testimony so that the people who are waiting and the hour is getting later for them as well.
Sure, I just wanted to follow up on something Mr. Tercini said. You mentioned that 40% is open space. Does that include your roadways?
No, that's exclusive.
The 40% of green space, basically, yard, garden?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tercini, so we're going to ask you to have a seat.
Sure.
And while you're seated there, you can think of a few things that you might want to say to us in the three-minute time that you'll have at the end. And then, of course, we'll have more questions for you. So let me open the public portion of this public hearing, and I would like to call Liz, and I might be pronouncing the last name incorrectly, Aunt Ansnus?
It's really just like it looks, but it looks funny, so nobody is sure what to say. Hi, I'm Liz Ansnus.
Just pull that microphone down to you. There you go.
I'm short. I live at 117 Rio Vista, which is in the Arroyo Rinconada Townhome Development right off of Pollard Road. So while I'm not a new neighbor, a near neighbor of this development, I go by it all the time. I know what it looks like. And it seems to me that this is an ideal use of a piece of property that's shaped like this one. It kind of goes around a corner and that, while that visually breaks up the mass of the development, it also makes it a lot more convenient for the people who live there. Now, let me just point one thing out about townhomes. My townhome, one identical to mine, just sold for barely under $1 million. So you don't get any more affordable housing in townhomes unless you specifically designate units to be below marketed. We've had a lot of trouble with that particular problem. I served on the board of my homeowners' association and it does create difficulties, which I won't go into. Anyway, why, why do I think this is a good idea? To me, it looks good. I've heard chattering and murmuring behind me, some people don't think so. But the most important reason to me is that it concentrates all of this housing in a spot which is in easy access to what people need and want today. Freeway on one side, light rail terminus on the other side. There is parks and recreation across behind what's on Winchester there by the lake. There is a hospital and at least two medical office buildings on the same side of the street, and then the new medical office building, which drove all of us crazy frankly, that is directly across the street, but within easy walk of that. And it seems to me, being an empty nester myself, that this is the ideal kind of location for that kind of development and project. We have plenty of multimillion-dollar houses in Los Gatos. I don't think we need more multimillion-dollar houses, but some people wouldn't agree with that. But this is still going to attract the kinds of people who will fit into Los Gatos, but who don't want to buy a multimillion-dollar house. Thank you.
Stay right there. Let's see if we have any questions. No questions, all right. Thank you, you can be seated. John, and is it Whitman?
My name, my name is John Whitman. I live at 147 El Penar. I wish to urge the town council to immediately approve this project because the property in question is currently surrounded by a chain link fence, as we know, has been that way for over two years. Makes the town of Los Gatos look like a bankrupt Rutz Belt City. I don't want to see that chain link fence there another two years. It's just, it's just an embarrassment. The present proposition calls for only 40 units. We figure about maybe 200 people might be housing those 240 units, housing those 40 units. That's fewer people per acre than in the surrounding area. But should this land not be developed? I'm afraid some out-of-town developer might lay hold of it, might take possession of it, and in some future, not have the best interest of our town at heart. And there's no telling what type of undesirable project might be able to get through. So I would encourage us to approve this. It's only 40 units with 150 trees, professional landscaping, and some open space. I'm sure the neighborhood will improve and the local merchants will appreciate it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? The next speaker is Sarah, and is it Modell or Model? Modell?
I strongly recommend approval for the proposed project at 375 Knowles Drive. Unlike the ones of us that were fortunate to come of age in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, we have new problems in the world. We have run out of cheap land. We have run out of cheap energy. And it looks like in California, we are rapidly running out of water. We have to face these issues, even though we don't wish to and people don't seem to even want to deal with it, as we go forward. I think this project addresses all three of these issues. Once its land has become so expensive, it has become necessary to build higher to provide housing for the huge number of people that keep coming into our state. There's simply no way for everyone to have a quarter-acre lawn. The project is close to public transportation and to office employment, so there will be less driving and people will save energy. With the small lot sizes, water will be conserved, and if our drought continues, there will not be any water to water large lots with the ones of us are fortunate to have. The project will be in the Campbell School District, and I heard previous development conversations about the huge overcrowding of our schools. So that issue was resolved by being in the Campbell School District. The young people, for the most part, are unable to live in our city because they don't have $1.6 million to buy a home, and this will allow a lot of young people to move in, which will be helpful for our future. As I understand from several people, I don't know if it's true, that 60% of our town is over 60 years old. So we need some younger people there to help our burden as we get older. Mrs. Bryant nicely showed me the pictures and all the drawings. I think it's a beautiful project. I think it'd be a wonderful addition to our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Ali Kintana?
I urge you, before even considering the specific PD site plan or the conceptual ANS, to address the question of what is the appropriate land use? And given that appropriate land use, what is the appropriate corresponding general plan designation and zoning? As this project is proposed right now, the office professional general plan and the office zoning will not match the actual use of the project. In addition, while it is allowed through a PD, it is not a permit, it is not permitted by right. It is only allowed if the PD is approved. But since it is requesting a general plan change and a PD zoning change, it does not seem to make sense to me not to actually make those designations match the actual use. Now, the other question is, what is the best use for this site? And I think there are arguments in favor of office because it's more consistent with the immediate buildings to the right and left. There's also, but office creates more traffic. There's also, you know, rationale for residential, but it should meet what is shown on the maps. In addition, the intensity of this project is, I think, extreme, and it's not clear to me what exceptions are being granted based on what zoning is being considered. Is, are the exceptions to the office zoning? Are the exceptions to multiple RM zoning, which is the 5 to 12 designation zoning? There are different exceptions depending on what you're comparing it to. The multiple residential zone has minimum setbacks between different types of units, between bedrooms and living rooms, and, and a whole number of other requirements. The open space on, on this does, seems particularly small. The, the units are, some of them have zero lot lines, but that's not shown on the, the actual map where there are parcel lines between them. Some of the setbacks provide very narrow open space, and I assume that in calculating the open space, they're adding or counting side yards, front yards, everything, when that is not all usable. And?
Ms. Kintana, you know that I have to stop you now.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Bryant. I live at 16940 Placer Oaks Road. And by nature of disclosing, I'm working for KT Properties, but I was asked to put in a card, and I'm happy to speak. I've got a particular issue that I'd like to bring up, if that would be okay. Okay. One of the things that we were very concerned about in, in working on this project is the community outreach. I happen to live on Placer Oaks Road, and for those of you who've approved those projects, I have one at each end of my street. So I do know that over the past several years, I have been approached by neighbors and other people about the projects, and we wanted to enhance this and by thinking about these issues when we looked at this particular project. Also, we were informed by the general plan itself, which is, in its vision statement, says, "Input from surrounding residents and property owners is a major consideration during the development review process," and the land use policy, which encourages developers in discussions as early as possible regarding the nature and scope of the project, project with neighbors. So this is a little table, and I apologize, it's a little primitive, but we put together to look at how much outreach we did make. We made actually 541 neighborhood contacts, and that's a pretty accurate thing. We had a couple of neighborhood meetings in which we advertised first to the 300-foot range and then to the 500-foot range. We've been doing this for a while. 2012 was the first, 2014 the second. The next thing is that we wanted you to know that we also went to nearby residential neighbors. We were concerned about people who lived in the immediate perimeter of the project and talked to them. We also talked to business neighbors. This is an area where there are a lot of businesses. We wrote letters, or Mr. Tercini did, over on his stationery to all businesses. We had several contacts, several in-person meetings, seven of them actually, with business owners, particularly in the shopping center, the Vasiona Station, and also over at the Dell Avenue project, which is across the street. There are a lot of small independent businesses. We also looked to people, as many of whom are in this room, that we called, who had been, I would call, people in Los Gatos who were spokespersons for different issues, not necessarily ones we thought would be favorable, but people we needed to talk to to tell them about the project. We had individual coffees with them, talked about the project as we went forward. And we also met with people in North Los Gatos. You heard from a couple of North Los Gatos residents, as well as others in the community, the wider community. And when you look at the number of letters received, we did go out to the larger community and talk to people about this particular project. And those are just some of the numbers. I'd be happy to provide that for the record if you would like it. Thank you very much.
Yes, that would be, that would be helpful. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Birch?
Yes, I, I assume when you reached out to your neighbors, that you reached out to the adjacent hospital. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I really, I, we're hearing aids and I simply didn't hear it.
Sure. I assume when you reached out to your neighbors, that you reached out to the adjacent hospital. Is that correct?
Yes, indeed, we did. Mr. Tercini, do you want to say what? We did meet, we talked to the hospital, and I think you met with them before I even came on aboard on the project. Yes, we did.
Okay, one of the concerns that I had was construction noise. Obviously, this is going to be a longer project in duration, and how you're planning to work with the hospital to mitigate that for the patients?
Okay. I'm not a noise person, so if you would like to talk about that, answer that question. If I may toss it over.
Sure, I believe that would become a condition of our approvals. There is a town ordinance with respect to construction hours. I believe it's 8 o'clock in the morning and to, I forget what, thank you, 8 at evening. But I had a similar situation. It wasn't a hospital. We had a adjoining hotel and an open patio adjacent to a residential high-rise project that we were doing. And so there was a lot of concern with respect to parties and weddings, and can you imagine having somebody having a wedding planned for a nice Saturday and having us lifting materials over, over their party? And so what we did is we reached out, let them know what type of activities we're going to have. And I think in, in construction today, it's, it's just wise to let the neighboring property owners know exactly what steps are being taken, what operations will be going on, the grading operation. That, that typically creates a lot of disruption early in the process, foundations, concrete trucks, et cetera. But I, so we're happy to, you know, have that as a condition. When we mentioned about reaching out to the hospital, reached out to the hospital when first got the property under contract with, with the county, and that was understanding that they had purchased two acres adjacent to us. We didn't have an opportunity to acquire that property and wanted to know whether or not from the hospital, whether or not they were interested in doing some type of parcel lot line adjustment. in doing some type of parcel lot line adjustment to put their land closer to 555 Knowles, the existing medical office building, and move our residential proposal out to the corner of Capri and Knowles. The gentleman that we met with that represents the hospital for the land did not express any interest whatsoever in a land swap or lot line adjustment. We also suggested, is there any compatible uses or anything that you want to discuss on what your plans are going forward? And so we can try to incorporate that into our plans. And at that time, and I think it's still current today, there hasn't been any submittals or any plans offered on what their proposal is. Some of the diagrams that we've used, we're showing a proposed medical office building up to the street frontage, just to give some illustration of what we think the interface would be between our development site and that of the hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Tercini. Is that it, Commissioner Birch? All right, any other questions? All right, Ms. Bryant, you may be seated unless you, have you completed?
Well, just one more sentence I'd like to put in here is, and I'm sorry the chart is so hard to read. But when we talk about results of these neighborhood meetings, one of the things we did was reduce the heights on Knowles and Capri as a result of neighborhood meetings. We also were very sensitive to some of the clustering of the larger three-story units into the center of the project because of that. And also thinking about how many houses would be facing Knowles. Original design, as you may remember, or somebody may remember, were three homes facing Knowles. When we talked to the neighbor across the street, neighbors across the street, there are two, we reduced that to one home from Knowles. And then there are, you know, the rest of the project goes in. But the one facing Knowles is a single home as opposed to three. These are the results of our neighborhood meetings.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'll call John Shepherdson.
John Shepherdson, 120 Oakrim. First, Ms. Bryant, actually, she understated her outreach. She actually called my office and came by to my office, and we had a wonderful meeting. She brought the EIR. She offered to meet with Mr. Tercini. I apologize, I was really busy and I wasn't able to. So she understated her outreach, and I wanted to thank you publicly for that. We also had a nice exchange at the Santa Cruz Warriors basketball game. That said, just some thoughts that I had. I really didn't plan on speaking, but one is, seems to me we have our general plan standards, and then we had some comments from Mr. Cannon. And kind of what I'm hearing is that the developers trying to drive the project rather than the standards driving the project. And that's perhaps on this project and other projects. And I'm just concerned that it would be easier if there was just more of an effort to comply with what the town offered, and then the approval process would be easier. But we get this friction when developers sort of try and extend what the standards mean. So that's sort of a general statement. Secondly, I spoke with Ron Deardon about transportation. He's with the Manetta Institute. And he expressed a concern that medium-density developments are not really going to solve our transportation problems. He's really talking in terms of these larger condo projects on top of existing light rail. Much, you know, he mentioned 30-story condo projects along the light rail, which would take the pressure off other areas. So, but he specifically expressed to me that medium density is really not the answer around the light rail. I am concerned that the light rail to come to Los Gatos is $175 million, and I don't see that in the near term. Highway 85, I was reading the North 40 EIR, and it mentioned that the level of service at times is F. We've got three arteries in Los Gatos from the north, 17, Winchester, and Los Gatos Boulevard. And if we have so much development in these arteries, we're going to clog them. And at some point, it's going to get, you know, it's all going to happen at once, and then we're going to maybe perhaps look back and say, you know, we overdeveloped. So with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Andy Wu?
Good evening. I'm Andy Wu. I still live at 28 Euclid. I wasn't going to speak on this. I didn't even know this project was before us this evening. But listening to the development team speak on this project, I have to say, I don't have a position either way for or against approval. But I will say this, if you're going to approve or recommend approval, do it on the truth, not on some sleight of hand or some lie. I don't know what the development team's been smoking, but as soon as I get my medical marijuana card, I'm getting me some of that. $1.1 million is not an affordable unit. My son is 27, and he's a financial planner. He makes pretty good money. He could never afford to buy this. He has a similar type of unit. It's in Japantown, right down Hitting Street. I'd love for him to live here, but for him to buy this type of unit, he would probably have to be making about $300,000 a year, if you take the cost of money and what he could get a loan for. Even with a two-income family, they'd be hard-pressed to buy a house like this. Nobody who works across the street on Dell Avenue is going to be able to afford a house like this because there are no businesses, as far as I know, maybe the medical offices, maybe the doctors there, the young doctors there. But the average worker working across the street is not going to be able to afford a house like this. The other thing is, I think I counted eight BMP units the developer will have. That's going to go nowhere close to what this town has to satisfy. I mean, there are members in this very room who can tell you what the actual numbers of what the town has to build in terms of affordable housing. Eight is not going to put even a slight dent. We're not even talking a nickel-sized dent in a door on what this house, this town has to build in terms of affordable housing. So don't fool yourselves into thinking that this is going to solve any problems. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Wu? Seeing none? Thank you. Lee Fago? Apologize if I've mispronounced that last name.
You were spot on.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lee Fago. I live in Blossom Manor, in the town section of Blossom Manor on Lilac Way. I have issues with density and the height that I see in these, as well as the architectural style of these buildings. If it's possible for the developer to put up the slide that showed that street view where we were discussing the height of the individual versus the building. I think the perspective that you see, this, to me, looks like walking in front of a large condo complex. You can't see the differentiation between these as single-family homes, detached, single-family Even in these images, you can see how close these units are to each other. The...
This is my technical.
That's okay. We're almost there? It's still Wednesday? More?
Streetscape.
Streetscape. The one where the concern over the image of the dog to the individual are those to scale. Okay, I'm losing my time. So let me, while we're searching for that, and again, I appreciate you doing that. Again, these images look to me like you're standing, looking at condos or a very dense building. And the height is too high. They're going at variance to what the town is recommending. There we go. That's any of these. Now, does that look like single-family homes? Is that the perspective of what a single-family home would look like? I don't think so. That's not like any single-family homes that I'm thinking of. Detached, single-family homes? This looks like you're driving into the new Section 8 housing that is available in New Orleans. I was just there and saw these. Believe it or not, that's what Section 8 housing, federally funded housing, is for indigent poor. Now, they're not singles. They're, one family would have one floor in these buildings. But that's what it looks like. And even though this could be a family taking that whole three floors, it still looks like cheap, dense housing. I don't think it's appropriate for Los Gatos. And why is the developer not following the recommendations and the guidance that's being provided to them? To the point, one of the earlier speakers said, they're taking almost an arrogant view towards what the town is recommending, what the planning commission is recommending, and what the architect has pointed out to them. And to the last point regarding kids playing in the yards, I invite you to come to Lilac Way in Blossom Manor. We have three basketball goals and three hockey goals, and kids are playing there all the time. They don't go to a park, they play on our street. They play in our front yards. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, Jeff Lockridge?
Jeff Lockridge, 109 Paseo Laura. I would ask, what exceptional thing that this plan development does for the town? I'm not exactly seeing much of an exception. The architectural designs don't seem to fit with the existing neighborhood and seem very two-dimensional for Los Gatos. The neighborhood, in quotes, on Knowles are single-family luxury homes right across the street. On Capri, the setbacks and heights don't match the existing homes that are there. And I'm not sure how compatible this project is with the neighborhood that it fits into, since there isn't so much of a neighborhood but business complexes on both sides of it and a, the, 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 no, no, not the hospital, the complex that's the market complex, the Purple Onion, the shopping center. Yeah. I wasn't, I'll say this, I wasn't expecting to talk either, so. I did a pretty good job with that one. And let's see, the existing neighboring setbacks are far greater than the requested setbacks. The setbacks on the medical complex is something like 25 or 30 feet, and this is asking for 15. It's going to look very strange to have these buildings stick out into Knowles Avenue and be so close to the road. It also seems strange to make so many exceptions for such a development. Traffic is, again, going to be a major concern. It's already been established that light rail is very unlikely to built in our lifetime, to be built in our lifetime. And possibly reducing this development by two to three units could actually add some needed open space for it. And last, given this area has already some of the most dense and intense residential land use with Villa Vasiona and open door and intense, and medical offices, maybe medical offices might be the best use of this land. Because I've actually heard that El Camino is trying to expand, and they've made some recent acquisitions down the road. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lockridge? Seeing none? Thank you. Glenn Williams?
Good evening. My name is Glenn Williams. I'm with the County Executive's Office for the County of Santa Clara. We own the property. I wanted to have a chance to just speak with you briefly and do two things. One is to extend to you the fact that the county does, in fact, support what KT is proposing to build on this location. We believe that certainly within the guidelines and discretion that this panel has, that KT produces a quality product, has worked very cooperatively with the planning department for Los Gatos in terms of reducing density. They're down from a substantially larger number to 40 units. They reduced the setbacks, they reduced, excuse me, they reduced the height on the frontages, both on Knowles and on Capri, down to two-story units to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors. It's interesting to me, in sitting in the audience, that I have not heard any of the immediate neighbors complaining about any of these, and they've done substantial outreach, that the neighbors have come out largely in support of the project. Just to give the commission a little bit of background to make sure that all of you do understand, this property was declared surplus by the County of Santa Clara 10 years ago. It had been sitting vacant longer than that. This is an idle piece of property that doesn't benefit the town of Los Gatos, and it doesn't benefit the taxpayers of Santa Clara County. When they declared it surplus, there was intense complications with the courts, because the courts were being dissolved, and so the state of California took over the courts. And so there were the issues of how do you separate out the two parcels? How do you grant? What does the courts want to do with theirs? They ultimately decided that they wanted it sold, and they wanted it sold immediately, which we in turn then did. Initially, for our parcel, the town of Los Gatos wanted to acquire it. So they asked us to set it aside, which we did. When they finally came back to us in December of 2010, they released it and said that they were unable to acquire it because they did not have the money. And they freed us up to go ahead and to sell the property. We went out to competitive bid. KT was a successful bidder. KT has been involved in this property and working cooperatively with the town for two and a half years. I strongly encourage you to consider their application and to work within the context of what's possible for the city of Los Gatos and make, turn this into a productive use for the town and something that the taxpayers of Santa Clara County can in fact recruit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go back to the podium. Commissioner Seack has a question for you.
I'm curious whether El Camino, when they purchased the corner parcel, whether there was any interest on their part to purchase the property that's now under discussion?
Yes, there was. El Camino Hospital was one of the other bidders. They bid less than half of the amount that the property ultimately went to contract. So their interest level was only at a dramatically lower level. And there's no indication that the county would be willing to sell at a price that was anywhere close to what El Camino had been interested. One of the concerns is that much has happened in 10 years. Much has happened in the last two and a half years. The county has needs for additional land, additional property. We need to find locations for a homeless shelter. We need to find locations for a reentry center, which is one of the uses that we now have because of the dumping by the state of California of a much larger number of incarcerated individuals back into our county. So we have needs for land. And I cannot predict for you what the Board of Supervisors would choose to do with the property if, in fact, the transaction with KT was not in place. It would be up to the board to decide whether to try to remarket it again, and if so, at what level and price they would be willing to accept. If, of course, it goes back and the county determines it do not be surplus and needed for program, then your roles are resolved because the county does not have to go through any entitlement process with, if it is for public use, the county controls that. Did that answer your question?
It does. One other question, and it's peripheral, since it is for public use. Did you get any inquiries from schools on purchasing property, purchasing that property?
We did at the, we did not. At the time that we declared it surplus, of course, there's a state requirement that we put out a notice to schools and also cities and special jurisdictions, others that might have an interest in the property. We did that. We did not, we put out the 60-day notice, and we did not have expressions of interest from anyone other than Los Gatos. Los Gatos expressed interest under that process. And we entered into negotiations with them, held it off the market. And ultimately, after holding it off the market, the city came back and said, we can't do it, don't want to do it.
All right, that's it. Thank you very much. Last speaker is Woody Needham. Last speaker is Woody Needham.
Good evening again. My name is Woody Needham. I live on Azalea Way in Los Gatos. I would just urge you to adopt the planning staff's recommendation against this project. And I would also urge caution in any approval of any planned developments in this town. They don't look like Los Gatos. They look like the Truman Show, with the fake streets and stuff like that. It just violates the general plan. I think we should follow the general plan and follow the rules that Los Gatos has set out and stop doing these planned developments, which allow the developer just to jam as many houses as he can on a piece of property. We already have the Honda development, which this... I hate to say this, I never thought I would, but this proposed development makes that look good. So please, adopt the planning staff's recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Trusini, we're going to give you up to three minutes now to add any further comments you may have about your application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to address the vice chair's comment that was made earlier this evening with respect to our efforts to look at the site from an office development perspective. Early on, we were going after Palo Alto Medical, very heavy with our brokerage representation, knowing that they were considering the Los Gatos Boulevard site as a site, and we offered our property and looked at and designed two buildings totaling approximately 70,000 square feet, and indicated at the time that Palo Alto Medical is looking for 40,000 feet, and we said, "That's fine, but this will provide you some opportunity for some expansion." Their preferred location was Los Gatos Boulevard. Second, we put a proposal out for Kaiser Hospital. Kaiser is still has not made a... has not landed to date, but part of the concern that Kaiser expresses that we can't accommodate as much square footage as they would like. They were looking for more than what we could accommodate, as was the case with Barracuda Networks. That was Barracuda Networks, the original founder of Barracuda Networks, interested in over 100,000 square feet of office space. And we were following the Albright development, and I said, "70,000 square feet is going to be a stretch, because in order for us to get that, we have to go to 39 feet in height versus the 35 feet that's allowed under the current zoning." So I don't think 100,000 feet would... We could lay it out, I could make it work, go to four-story, it could make it work. And they opted to elect to go to South San Jose for now, but I think they still keep their present location in Campbell on Winchester Boulevard. And also looked at the medical office, medical condos, that is pretty popular along Los Gatos Boulevard. And some of the existing Dardanelli properties, there was some thought that they might convert to medical condos. They also sell in the... can sell in the $500 per square foot range, but we didn't believe that there was enough of a marketplace for that. And the last thing we want to do is build office that sits vacant. And really looked and evaluated the market for existing office space in the Dardanelli area. And yes, along Winchester Boulevard, you're able to command some pretty high rents on the brand-new medical office space that was there, the dialysis company that located there, we also talked to a dialysis company. My final comments really has to do with the proposed density for our project at 12 units to the acre, and I wanted to point out very quickly that the surrounding properties, obviously this is 555 Knowles Drive, and that's at 35 feet in height. And then we have this property right here, which is... I'm sorry, Villa Vesona, thank you, I'll slow down a moment. Villa Vesona in this location over here, and that is also at 35 feet height, and Villa Capri here is at 33 feet in height. The density of Villa Vesona is 39 units to the acre, and I want to say it's 27 units to the acre here in Villa Capri.
All right, Mr. Trusini, then I'm going to have to ask you to just stay at the podium, and we have some other questions. And I just want to ask you a couple of questions myself as we begin to think about this. Did I understand you correctly that you are open to the idea of building down and reducing the height to two stories above ground?
Yes, I am.
All right. And did I understand you correctly that you might be amenable to whether it's a reduction in density or in some way finding more open space?
Yeah, I think by pure nature of reducing the three-story units to two-story units, we've looked at that, and we've looked at the impact, and it does reduce space. And so what that provides for additional common open space, I think it will provide for potentially more private open space.
I'm actually thinking of more public open space.
I thought that's the direction we were going to go, I just wanted to answer your question.
So this is why I'm asking you that you are amenable to a reduction in the... Is the 40 number the magic number to make the project work? Or is this the hoped-for, loved-it-but-could-do-less number? How about that for a really legal definition?
Legal definition, very technical. And I've been involved with my brother Ken for 25 years, but we've been in the real estate development business for over 30 years. It really depends on when you come out and the timing of the market. And I've been in markets before where I've had 12 minimum one-acre lots in Arinda, and I couldn't move them, and I couldn't sell them, I couldn't sell them for the $1.2 million. So the optimum number is... We have not been trying to, to the earlier point, when we looked at townhouse development to the 18 to 20 units to the acre, I could get up towards 60 townhome units here. So it really hasn't been a number-driven decision. We did come in with a 45-unit project. We have reduced that down, and part of the concern I have about doing that is then you don't leave yourself much room. But I wanted to put our best foot forward and did reduce the project to a 40-unit. Is there room to come down further? Obviously, my desire here is to move forward with a residential project, and if that means less density, that's what we're going to have to look at.
Right. And then I have... I'm going to make a comment to you that a boulder does not make for a playground, all right? And so in your view, I mean, we're talking about a small tot lot or creative playground, I think that's what you called it, but it's got one big boulder. And so I just want to make that as a personal comment, having been around a lot of young children.
They call them climbing rocks, but that's okay.
The other thing that I want to ask you is, I just want to be very clear about this evening, that we're going to tell you what we think, and as I understand it, you are willing to continue this matter, go back to the drawing board. Am I correct in reading into our conversation?
That's exactly why I'm here this evening.
All right, all right. So with that, Commissioner Bandami.
A few minutes ago, you said that you did consider office for the site at one point, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. However, on June 26, 2013, during the general plan committee meeting, you said office doesn't pencil out. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. Based on our analysis of the existing marketplace in that immediate area, the average rents are $2 triple-net. With medical, it's usually on a modified gross basis, but I try to reduce it back down to a triple-net basis, a little easier to understand. New construction today, you need a minimum of $3.50 triple-net. The gentleman that just completed the medical office building on Winchester, those are the types of numbers that he's able to command out there. He's got better street frontage, better exposure, smaller units. In order for us to command that rent, that's why we were looking at a company potentially like a Barracuda. We also went out to Apple Computer just to... Sold an... Actually, put Apple into a building that we own in Cupertino, and ultimately sold that building. But at the time, Apple was... We solicited their... Put a proposal in front of them to see whether or not they would be interested in space. Their comment back was, "It's a very nice location, we're not there yet, we're going to Sunnyvale, we're going to some other marketplaces, but we're not ready to go to Los Gatos." And if we were ready to go to Los Gatos, 70,000 square feet wouldn't do it for us. But it's really rent-driven, new construction for office, you really have to get in the $3.50 triple-net to make a reasonable return.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch.
Okay. Actually, this may be more for the architect. I'm having a hard time on the drawings clarifying what the setbacks you're proposing are. Even with my glasses, I couldn't see it. So if somebody could help me out with that, I'd like a little clarification on those.
Sure. I'd like actually Sue Dillon, our civil engineer, to come up, and she was involved in the actual layout of the plans. Mr. Ruthroth will tell you. That's not his area of expertise, and he's going to laugh about that, but I hear that a lot. So we'll bring Sue up, and she'll decide... Discuss the setbacks. Thank you.
For my fellow commissioners, I'm looking on C-2.1.
Good evening.
Hi. So, yeah, I was looking on sheet C-2.1, and I was wondering if you could clarify for me, and some of them I can see what the setback is, like the 11 feet, but in between the buildings and some of the areas, I can't. And I think for everybody here, it would be helpful if you could clarify the setbacks that you're proposing, so we could compare them to what is standard in that zone.
Are you talking about the setbacks between units?
I'd like all the front back and the side setbacks, please.
Okay. I think on Capri, we have a 10-foot front setback. Okay. I think the setback to the side, to the north, is just over seven. In-between units, there, I believe we have four feet for each side, so it'd be a total of eight. I think all the side yards, we either have a four or five-foot side yard, so you'd have eight or 10 feet in-between.
Okay.
All the homes have 10-foot rear yards.
Okay. And the standard front for each home, is that 10 feet, or?
It varies according to the house plan, because some of them, the fronts go into a common area where there's a sidewalk in between the two houses. So those are like 22 feet between the houses. And then if you have... Some of them have the front door at the end... The entry is the same location as the garage door. So those are reduced to like... Some of them are like four feet from the back of walk.
Okay. And when you said 22 foot between, you were looking at if it's facing one of the common streets from unit to unit facing one another?
Correct.
Okay. So from the front of the unit to the... Maybe the edge of the sidewalk. If you're saying the door to the sidewalk is four foot, we could be looking at two feet or 18 inches. Is that correct? So for example, on C-2.1, if on the upper left-hand side, I was looking at unit number 17, for example.
No, I believe we have four feet behind the back of walk on that case.
Okay. That helps. Thank you. Like that to that, I was trying to determine what that is, four feet. Okay, that was all I had for setbacks. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Birch.
I would like to ask one other question. I'm not really certain who will answer this. Somewhere in all this paperwork, there was a note that stated that these plans are actually conceptual, and I would like to know how conceptual they are, because it seems that we're making a lot of decisions based on the drawings that are in front of us, and I would like to know if this is your fixed plan, or after we have this discussion, there's going to be a massive change in design.
Yeah, that's a very good question, and there's a lot of times, the terminology is conceptual. And I'll give you one example, and it's not a conceptual site grading plan. We have to meet the C3 requirements, and you go through a lot of detailed work to go there, and including additional grade changes that we've made to try to address the height issue, and we're able to reduce the height by, in some cases, a foot and a half in the areas on the north side of the property. For the houses themselves, these homes are very far along in their design, but given that there is going to be direction given tonight, and there has already been direction given to us through the staff report, we're prepared that those plans, not to the liking of Mr. Ruthroth, but we're going to have to redesign those elevations and footprints. That's part of the process. But unfortunately, in today's world with processing of projects, you get very detailed into your plan sets, and so they're not just sketches and schematic drawings, they are... I could actually hand that set of plans to a framing contractor, and we can get rolling. That's how far along they are.
Okay. And I do understand that, I spend a lot of time looking at blueprints, but I want to know for certain, like the... For example, the layout of the roadways within the development, is that going to be your set layout of roadways? Are we going to see that change?
We like this configuration of the roadway. It's a very efficient use of the site. So when we're looking at, there is a reduction in the homes, the roadway configuration will stay relatively fixed, no modifications.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bandami.
So in that respect, you still wouldn't consider driveways to enter the individual garages of the homes?
No, because they're not needed for this housing type. It's not a good use of the land.
Not for parking?
We have two-car garages for every home today, so you have existing garages, and right now, we're showing 21 guest stall, parking stalls. So we have not only garage space to accommodate two full-size cars, we have the more than what's required under the town ordinance or guidelines. Thank you.
Sometimes you might have a problem with people double parking in the roadway, and you also have teenage drivers sometimes with bigger homes, bigger families.
Right. I appreciate that, and as I say, we do have 21 guest stalls for folks that would have friends arriving or other family members that need to park beyond what they can park in their garage.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Right. I wanted to get back to your garden idea, the raised garden beds. And so the question is, this will be under an HOA? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And does that mean that also the garden bed project will also be part of the HOA?
That's correct.
And will that be... Can you talk to us a little bit about how... Because I would imagine that you would create that HOA.
Yeah, we would create the HOA, and start... The basics of that would be to actually build the beds, install the planting material, maintain that planting material as we transition from our ownership to the individual property owners. And then from there, they can decide with their own committee with respect to how they want to maintain that, the community gardens, and how best to deal with that. But we would like to set some guidelines for them to follow.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions, Mr. Trusini, you are excused from the podium. And I'm now going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any commissioners have questions of staff, want to comment on the application, or want to introduce a motion for consideration by the commission. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to comment to see if I am correct in kind of where we are from what I've heard. I thought the applicant was very good, and I thought your questions to him, he received them very well, and I appreciate that. And so it seems to me, I personally think there are some changes that ought to be made, and we've talked about those. And I would like to make... I'm not going to make it right now, I want to hear what other people have to say, but I'm suggesting that we make a motion to continue it, but that... Not simply a motion to continue it, but to give some ideas, so we're in some kind of, for the applicant's sake, we don't want to just say, "Go back to the drawing board." I think we really want to say what we're concerned with. And I think what I've heard so far is the height, and certainly, were the applicant to go down on some of these rather than up, the height problem should not be a problem anymore. We were somewhat concerned about setbacks, as I know the staff was too. The staff had suggested that the minimum setback, at least the minimum setback... The staff had suggested that the minimum setback, at least in one area, was 15 feet, I think. So I think we ought to consider the setbacks. Also, I thought Mr. Cannon's letter actually was, was, was very helpful and very good. And I think, um, I think the applicant ought to respond affirmatively to those suggestions or concerns by Mr. Cannon. For example, the types of windows and the, and the use of stone and that kind of thing. I, you know, I really don't quite understand why the applicant would argue about that. And I, I for one, think that Mr., and I'm throwing that out too, Mr. Cannon's suggestions that have not been affirmatively responded to. And they've responded affirmatively to a lot of things he suggested. And it may be that in the final analysis, there'll be some things that they really think we just can't do. But as I sit here and having heard the responses, I didn't hear, very frankly, good reasons why they couldn't be responded to. So I just throw that out, because I'd like to hear from other, what other things other people may have before a motion is made.
Commissioner Sayak?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. I, I do agree with you in, in that, uh, the, the very, not, not the variances, but the exceptions that are being asked for to the zoning requirement. I think the, the, I'm looking at this at a, as a larger picture. And I do believe that the applicant has provided justification why it is not going to be medical nor office. I think, based on the evidence presented tonight, that you've made a clear argument why residential is the desired use. And, and I think that, I'm in agreement with that. Again, looking at it from a bigger picture, then I do believe that the general plan amendment should reflect that and of, of the mind that it should be zoned residential. And if it were zoned residential, then a lot of these zoning issues that we would be looking at, such as setbacks, the FAR, building coverage, building height, would, it would basically lay out what we would be asking of you, because it would be clearly stated, based on residential guidelines, and I understand it's guidelines, but those are guidelines that we ask, so that should be no surprise of what we desire as a town, that that is what I personally would want to see with this development. Now, I understand that it could be zoned office for flexibility, although if it's all residential, there's no need for flexibility. And I just don't see the justification for a PD overlay zone. And there's no alternative use in development. There's no extenuating site characteristics that are, that are unique. And to create optimum quantity and use of open space, yes, we can argue that there's 40%, but even the open space is subjective, because you can argue that with all the individual private spaces, that's open space. But when I think of a large development, I, I think of a bigger communal area. So if it were zoned residential as its intended use, I think a lot of these issues would just fall to the wayside, and it would be clear what exactly we'd be expecting of you.
I have a question as well. So let me ask this question of staff, so that I am sure of where we, where we can go here. The town council's resolution of 2011 says, states that any proposed housing project that doesn't meet affordable housing overlay zone requirements cannot be permitted. But then this site was removed from that. So no matter what, we need to address the town council's issue. Is that correct? No matter where, how we go, in whatever direction we take tonight?
If there's gonna be a residential project, yes, the resolution comes into play and does need to be addressed.
So it's not just a simple matter of saying, "Okay, we're, we're gonna zone this residential." We have to zone it residential and address the issue of the town council resolution.
Well, ultimately, the council will take action on the resolution, and so the commission will, could just make a recommendation-
Well, that's what I'm saying.
On the resolution, in conjunction with the recommendation that moves forward on the plan development.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner O'Donnell, maybe I didn't ask the question you were gonna ask.
You didn't. What I'm wondering is, and Commissioner Sayak said something that I had said earlier, but I wanna make sure that we're not approaching this without giving due consideration to the applicant, too. I'm asking the staff, I guess, if, if we assume for the moment that we're saying that the project, by and large, could go forward with the changes that we're talking about, which might include some reduction in the number of units. I, I don't know. Have to see what it lays out. But then we're also saying that you don't really need a PD. I wanna make sure that's true, because if we think he doesn't need a PD, and he can do that with the kind of adjustments we're talking about, but in fact, we're missing something, and if we're zoned residential, he would not, for example, I don't know, get 12 units to the acre and, and other things. So when we say, "Well, why do you need the PD?", I wanna make sure that, if we say that, we're not seeking the project, no matter what he does.
They need the PD to pursue a project that's being proposed, or anything close to that.
But could you tell us why?
Could not achieve this density or proposed lot size. If it's rezoned to RM, you're looking at a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet per unit.
Okay. Because I don't think we're trying to shoot the project down. So that's why, even though I asked that question initially, I wanted to make sure before we try to work collectively here, and then shoot the project down and say, "Now, would you please come back with another drawing?" That's not gonna work. So thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bandami?
So, um, this was removed as an AHAZ site, because there's an AHAZ site right next door, and that would create too much density, correct, having the two sites together?
There's one in close proximity. It is on the corner of, um, is it, it's the, it's the South Bay site, so it's on Winchester. So it's in the, you know, immediate area, but not abutting. Yes, the general plan committee felt that the two sites were too close to one another, that that would be putting too much density into the, this area. And it was a traffic, primarily a traffic consideration was, I think, the biggest concern. Ultimately, they felt that the South Bay site was more conducive to housing, particularly since the Aventino project was immediately abutting. The Aventino apartments are on the Sobrato Development, right behind the buildings that Netflix currently op, uh, Netflix is currently in, the two buildings on Winchester and the apartments behind, and the app, and also the South Bay site actually has a general plan land use designation of high-density residential. So that AHAZ designation was more consistent with that existing land use designation.
So approving a planned development, you're still gonna have density and traffic concerns, rather than keeping it office?
Residential will be a lower traffic generator than office. Medical office is a much higher traffic generator.
But that's if it's a 70,000-square-foot office?
Office in general is going to be a higher, a higher generator. Medical office is the highest of the office uses.
For traffic, but not for density. So we're still concerned about a density issue with increased residential?
Well, even at 12 units to the acre, the project would have less traffic than a, than an office project would have.
Thank you.
And there's also no density with office. Office is not a density consideration, it's just a square footage consideration.
Commissioner Birch?
Just a follow-up, because I wanna make sure I understand something. You said that one of the reasons that it was removed from one of the AHAZ sites had to do with traffic. So at that time, when, when it was being considered, was the idea that this would not go to residential, that this would stay zoned office, and an office would be in that place?
No, I don't think that was the, the idea. But if it was an AHAZ site, we were looking at possible densities up to 24 units per acre.
Okay.
And so that was a lot different than what the applicant's proposing.
Okay. Thanks. That, that clarifies that.
Commissioner Talisfor?
So just to clarify for us again, the, the, the density that's here now is proposed as medium density.
Correct.
But is this correct, that the staff feels that at this density that's being proposed tonight, the 40, that it's at the high end, or at the highest end?
That's at the high end of the medium density. The medium density is five to 12 units per acre. Our high-density designation is 12 to 20. So the applicant is proposing at the high end of the medium scale, but they're not proposing a, a high-density project based on town definition. Our high-density zoning would be 12 to 20 units per acre. So it's like, you know, right at the cusp of those two zoning, medium.
Yeah. Or a tipping point.
Sure. It's, it's right at the dividing line between the medium and a high-density project, according to how the town defines it.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm gonna make a motion that we continue it, and I'll come back to how long we should continue it, because we really kinda need some guidance from the applicant about how much time they think they need. But I'm gonna make a motion, we can, we continue it to a date certain, so that we can have the proposal amended, but not including dropping the PD. In other words, the amendment, whatever he does, would not include dropping the PD. But it would, it would address the issues of height, it would address the issue of bulk and mass, would address the issues raised by Mr. Cannon, really, is what I'm talking about. And would include in that, and I think Mr. Cannon raises this point, would be the common area, open space things. He does talk about that. So the, the things mentioned, we've talked about in more particularity this evening, but also, it's right there in Cannon's letter. We'd like to see those matters addressed in a more equitable way than we've seen. We're not telling the applicant how many units, but it does appear that unless he's awfully good with this, it'll probably end up being somewhat fewer units, whether it's one or more, I don't know. So that's, that would be the motion. Now, if any of the, my fellow commissioners don't like the, the generality of that, in other words, keeping, I'm not asking him to withdraw the PD application. So I, I would, I don't wanna mislead him. So if, if I'm getting a second, I'll need a second, any of the other commissioners don't agree with that, I think we ought to express that, so we know where we're coming from.
Commissioner O'Donnell, let me, let me second the motion, so that we can move on to the discussion. And so I will second the motion. All right. Now, let's have some discussion. Okay. Commissioner Birch?
I just wanna ask a, a question on this kind of a motion, because this is a first for me. We do have three in front of us, and so I assume that your motion did not include, like, the environmental impact reports or any, or others. This is just strictly on the plan development application?
Correct.
Okay.
It was my intention here, and you're absolutely correct. We could deal with the other issues, but I personally would just assume we defer on the other issues, so we can consider everything at one time.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I support that motion. I, I do think that residential is the best use in this area. But I do feel, you know, based on other applicants and things that we've been seeing recently, that we do need to reduce the height, we need to look at some of the setbacks. And I definitely think more open space, particularly because you are kind of a pocket area there. I could see more open space being very used by the neighborhood and creating a tight-knit community in that area, and would be something that would, actually, I would hope, increase the value of the area.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Right. And so I understand your motion, but what I wanted to make sure is that we, as a commission, all agree that it should be residential and not office. So how do we, I, I think I heard that from most people.
Well, if somebody doesn't agree with it, in other words, what, what I said was, it would stay, the PD would stay, therefore, the residential being proposed. So if one of my fellow commissioners says, "You know, I really don't support that because I don't think it ought to be residential," they should just say so. But at the end of the day, is if the predominant number of us agree that it ought to stay residential, then I think the applicant can have some comfort.
Okay. So, and I would reiterate that we definitely are not encouraging any playing areas or open community space to be children in streets. I don't think that's what we consider open space. I don't, you have no driveways, cars coming in and out, there are no nearby parks, there are, and the, the parks that are there would require a car or a long bike ride or a long walk, which today, I don't know that that would happen. And then also, just speaking of the harmony, actually, what hasn't been noticed tonight is that there, there is an example of the developments that are actually adjacent to this property, that do have setbacks, large setbacks, that have parked benches where people can sit on. And that's, I forgot the name of the street, but it's the adjacent one right behind this property to the north. So I would really take that into consideration when we think about setbacks and harmony with this redesign that you will hopefully come back with. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll make some comments then, and I want to acknowledge the applicant, Mr. Tressini. I do think that you have spent a lot of time on this project, and I know that in other committees I've sat on, that I have seen you trying to work toward an end result that is acceptable to us. I also want to comment on Ms. Bryant's community outreach. It isn't often that we see that extensive community outreach, and I know that the community around you, and actually, people who are here, do appreciate that. And at least we were not, the, the neighbors did not feel blindsided tonight, even those that disagreed with you had to agree that they were informed. And I think that sets a very high standard for future developments and community outreach. So what I want to be certain is that you understand that when we continue this, we're continuing it with direction, is what it's called. And so there are going to be substantive plan changes. You have indicated you're, that you will evaluate going down to reduce the height. And I think that reducing the density is going to resolve some of the setback issues and the community open space needs, and also address the issues in Mr. Cannon's letter. And the final comment that I want to make is that the size of these homes is actually very generous, and so we know that these can accommodate families. And I think that you've heard from fellow commissioners tonight, that when you bring in families and you don't have wide sidewalks or other places where kids, toddlers can be on tricycles, or you have some comfort that a 10-year-old can fly out of the garage with a bike and not worry about incoming cars. Those are things that we do think about here, and it is, you know, part of the planning process. So we're looking for solutions to where families live and how they live. Those are my comments. Commissioner Sayak?
So I, I do wanna agree that in no way are we trying to derail the project. We understand, I understand very clearly what you are trying to achieve, and I, and I hope you understand what I'm trying to achieve. But I do wanna, it's a process-related question. Commissioner O'Donnell, was your motion to, and I understand it's specific to the plan development, but addressing our discussion of general plan amendment, is it, is it the request from public to office professional, then rezoning it from office to office PD? Or is it general plan from public to residential?
It's, it's as proposed.
It is as, okay. Okay.
And also, just, let's not forget we need a date, so remember, we don't have a date yet.
Okay. So I just wanna, I shared up my comments, they're very specific. I support the residential. And I also, just as I mentioned earlier, I do believe that the general plan change should go to residential, and for that specific reason, I'll be denying, I'll be voting a no on that.
All right. So we have a motion, oh, yes. Commissioner Bandami, you wanna make a comment?
If I were to support the motion, does that mean I'm in agreement with a plan development for the site?
Yes, I understand. Or, Mr. Paulson, you wanna make a comment on that?
Well, I think it's probably best to let the maker of the motion, but I would understand from his comments that he is comfortable with a PD, and so therefore is, as, a PD as proposed.
Well, my, yeah, my understanding is, if you don't, if you're not comfortable with the process, or you're not comfortable with the use, then you ought to just say so, and we'll have X number of people who don't agree with it. Because I don't wanna have the applicant spend a bunch of money and find out later that we thought, you know, "We don't agree with what you just did, we should've told you first." So I, I appreciate Commissioner Sayak saying, "I'm sorry, I, I'm not for the PD." And that's fine. And if you are against a particular use, for example, thinking it would be better to be office or whatever, it would be helpful to say so, because then the applicant will not really be able to count on your vote. And he can't count anybody's vote, but it would be nice if he knows where we're coming from. And you would be very honest and say that.
I prefer office for the space. That's how it's zoned. I would consider residential, but only if it followed the residential design guidelines, and not a PD with allowances for deviating from our residential design guidelines with setbacks, et cetera.
Could I just say, you know, there's no reason a person- Could I just say, you know, there's no reason a person can't comply with the residential guidelines and still be a PD. You're not required to, but there's no reason to... So I guess what I would want to know is, is that what you want, to be compliant with the residential guidelines, or are you saying you're against the PD, period?
I prefer the site be office.
Okay.
All right, we have heard comments from everyone, so let's go ahead and vote on Commissioner O'Donnell's motion. All in favor, raise your hand. Four opposed. Four to two. We are going to continue this matter with direction. And Mr. Paulson, tell me about the continuance date.
Well, we need a date certain, not knowing how many changes or the timeframe that it's going to take the applicant to pull that together. We're probably looking at a minimum of, I would assume, 14... And I would... I guess I'll just look to the applicant for a nod, whether or not three or four weeks is enough time for you to pull that information together. And... Right, so, you know, I look there, assuming it'll take approximately a month, then we have our normal noticing so that we can make sure we've evaluated everything and modified anything as necessary. So we're probably looking at a tentative date of July 9th. Challenge there is we'd have some other upcoming projects that may be going on there already. Should that be the case, we would speak with the applicant and either potentially try to move that to... Actually, at this point, I would suggest moving it to June 25th. And then if we need to continue it to July 9th and/or July 23rd, then we can go from there. Because we can't go backwards from July 9th. But I would leave that to the commission's discretion. June 25th?
Do we have another large meeting that night, or another large agenda item that night?
We have the potential for a large meeting that night, and that's why I tried to maybe not so clearly express the caveat that if there are other items that are already tentatively scheduled that do happen to go on those meetings.
Yes.
Then we would produce a cover letter and continue it to the next appropriate night.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And we do need a motion for that.
What?
To continue it to that.
We have a motion. All we need was to put the date. I made the motion and I said...
We can incorporate that in there. Thank you.
So, I guess I can say, I'll adopt that with a secondary... Here. Vote.
Yes, you vote.
All right.
We'll include that in the motion.
All right, so, Mr. Paulson, is there any further action needed on this agenda item?
Not this evening.
Or are we going to... All right, so we have closed that part of Agenda Two. Is there a report from the Director of Community Development?
There is. There's a combo report, and actually, you will get a partial report from an actual community development director. So... But with that, I'm going to start with the first piece, which is, since we last met, the Development Review Committee has met three times and approved a handful of projects. The first was on April 29th, a architecture site application for a new house in the Highland Oaks Plan Development was approved, as well as the DRC looked at a building permit for a parking lot improvement and recommended approval of that. On May 6th, they looked at another parking lot modification for a site. And I would say, the previous one I mentioned was at St. Mary's, and the one on May 6th was for Classic Burgers on Los Catos Boulevard. And then on May 13th, they reviewed two applications. One was at 14660 Hancock Court, and that was approval of demolition of an existing house and the construction of a new house. And the second item was for minor exterior alterations to commercial buildings out at Downing Center. And with that, I will pass it on to the Community Development Director.
Thank you. I wish to update the commission on the latest town council meeting of May 5th. And at that meeting, the city council, or the town council did approve a conditional use permit at 81 East Main Street for Zona Rosa, a new Mexican restaurant. So that was approved. And then the town council did introduce and adopted the first reading of an ordinance regulating the use of leaf blowers in town, and the second reading will be coming back to town council for its consideration. I also have an announcement for you. As you may be aware, the mayor is doing the State of the Town address on Friday, and all of the commissioners are welcome to join us. We will be at Oak Meadow Park at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., so please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pravati. Do any members of the commission have an issue to bring to the attention of the commission? All right, seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.